I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Zito, would you call roll, please?
Vice Mayor Borelli here. Mayor Hagan.
Here.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
All right. At this point, item three is announcements in the presentations to the public. Do we have any announcements at this point? Okay. Closed session report, Mr. Driscoll, please.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Tonight, in closed session, the council discussed the labor negotiations with the unrepresented employees. No action was taken, however, in closed session, as that action with respect to their agreements will take place on tonight's open session agenda when item 8.11 is pulled from the consent calendar and discussed in open session. No other reportable action was taken tonight.
Thank you, sir. We get adoption of the agenda at this point.
Mayor, could I make a request?
Sure.
We've had a request to move up item 12.5. We have some consultants here regarding the EIR. Perhaps that could be moved up as the first discussion item rather than the last discussion item at council's discretion.
12.5, move to above 12.1.
And to pull item 8.11 as a regular agenda item.
Okay. With those two actions, can I have a motion, please?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Say it, moved and seconded. You want to do a roll call or just all in favor say?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. She was on vacation for a couple of weeks, you know, it's just...
For gifts.
Her phone is so happy she's home. All right. So, the agenda has been adopted with those changes. Under ceremonial matters, item 6.1, it's a proclamation commending Marilyn Ferguson for her dedication to the spirit of Placerville. So, at this time, I'll read the proclamation and I believe Marilyn, if you would like to... That's you, Marilyn.
She's looking around like...
Would you please come to the podium and just enjoy, just kind of relax. That microphone's not on, so don't say anything. I'm going to let you relax for a minute and listen to me. Proclamation of the city council of the city of Placerville commending Marilyn Ferguson for her dedication to the spirit of Placerville. Whereas Marilyn Ferguson is known as an invaluable resource for the city of Placerville's colorful Gold Rush history as both a charter member of the Eldorado County Heritage Association for over 40 years and as co-author, along with Jane Schloppy, of a walking tour of historic Placerville, 1848 to 1874. And whereas Marilyn came to Placerville with her family in 1967 and soon thereafter purchased the historic Ingram Atwood House at 29... I don't want to give out your address, on Bedford Avenue. And whereas owning an historic home spurred Marilyn's interest in historical research and thus began her long and varied historical research career. And whereas Marilyn was an original member of the city's first historical advisory committee in 1980 and more recently has been working for the last seven years as the manager of the Fountain and Tolman Museum on Main Street in Placerville. And whereas Marilyn's selfless commitment to preserving our historic past is evident by her love of her community and her unselfish giving of her time for the good of her community. And now therefore I, Carl Hagan, mayor of the city of Placerville, do hereby commend Marilyn Ferguson for her outstanding dedication to preserving our historic past by her unique contributions to the Placerville community dated June 24, 2014. Congratulations Marilyn for all of the hard work you do and thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, my God.
At this point, you can say a couple of words if you'd like, or if you're so stunned that you can't, that's okay. I'm going to bring this down to you.
Is this on? No. This is really, really surprising. On one hand, it's a huge honor. On the other, it's kind of embarrassing. But, the only thing I would say is that for all those years, I did the research because it was great fun. And I came to realize that all the people that are in this room tonight arrived here on the backs of the people that came before us and I got interested in them. So, it's like I kind of in my head think I know three, four, five, or six, or seven generations of people that live in Placerville. That's it. I don't have anything else to say.
Thank you, Marilyn. Is this yours? Okay. I'll give you this signal.
Marilyn, before you sit down, I'd like to say something. I met Marilyn years ago when I was working on Main Street and didn't have a full appreciation until I was actually asked her to help me understand the difference between a Queen Anne's Victorian and... I've already forgotten the other style. And Marilyn just spews, it just comes out of her, all this data. And I'm so amazed she's not a computer. She carries this stuff in her brain like I would put it on an Excel spreadsheet. And I was so impressed and I started to really pick her brain after that. I think she probably remembers how annoying I was to come over when she was at the restaurant. And I would ask her, can you help me with this? Can you help me with this? As I went through my 11 years on the planning commission. And I was really grateful years later when it became kind of the norm to ask the historical advisory committee and to actually talk to the commission on various elements because as a planning commissioner, you're not an expert on Queen Anne's Victorians and you don't know what the difference between a portico and a porch is, you know? So, those things were really, really important to me and I valued my friendship with Marilyn Ferguson and I looked forward to all... When she moved into the Fountain Tolman Museum, I was so excited because this was where she belonged, sharing this information with the tourists that come into our community. Because not only does she know architecture and she knows the styles of what we have here and the different areas that we have, the different little communities, she knows all the people. She knows the people that they came from. She knows their cousins and their second cousins and who married who. And it's just, to me, it was the most amazing thing how this woman's brain works. And I am forever, forever in your debt for all the information you shared with me and I totally think this reward has come not too late.
All right. Thank you, Marilyn. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Yeah, she did a great job. Thank you, Carolyn. Carol. Okay. At this point, it's public comment, brief, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. That is within the budget and subject matter jurisdictional of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specific circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. I will recognize you should come forward. And again, the key thing is you are limited to three minutes. Please don't make any slanderous comments. Please give any written material presented at the meeting to the city clerk for the public record. At this time, are there any written communication that we've received?
Mayor and council, just wanted to note that the council did receive a document entitled "Against the Half-Cent Sales Tax," about a four-page document. It was not authored. We do not... It was anonymous and therefore we do not have anyone to respond to on that, but I just wanted to note to the council that that document was received.
Okay. Thank you. And at this time, are there any oral communications on items that we have not seen that are not on our agenda? If so, please approach the... Go ahead. Okay. Kurt, you're going to go ahead first.
Carl, I just wanted you to know that when it comes to people getting angry or upset or pounding gavels, I don't take it personally. And to let you know, I got you a gift. Brand-new tea kettle inscribed to Carl Hagan, City of Placerville, Mayor. May you long use this to let off steam. I just wanted you to know that I'm available afterwards for the typical ceremonial grip-and-grin photographs. When it came to the subject of last week, when I asked the question about was that agenda item referring to the streetscape plan, it wasn't rhetorical. When members of the public get that file, it is, if it's single-page, about a quarter of an inch thick. And that report was about 36 pages. And then, the reference to bulb-outs is just a phrase. You don't know until you get here that it incorporates by reference the streetscape plan first proposed, something like 2005. So, when people get the idea that, you know, the plan called for changing Main... changing the bell tower, that's actually in the plan. So, that's where the public would get that idea about these radical transformations of the historical landscape of the town. This photograph appears in that report that was flashed on the screen referred to by reference. That's a giant cement planter that doesn't fit the historic makeup of the city. Afterwards, I'd have one city council member and one member of an advisory committee tell me that it wasn't intended, those have been changed. But if you look at the website, first of all, as of last week, two of your most competent, able people, Susan Zito and George Spriggs, both told me it's not on the streetscape plan, it's not on the website. They honestly believe that. You knew or should have known that there were problems with the website. Those actually was on the website and it's now been made clear. But there's nothing that tells the public, oh, well, we modified those plans. So, the public doesn't know what your plans are just by looking at the website. There's no disclaimer that says this isn't there. When you're selling the public on the idea of, let's say you need more money to do things like repay Main Street, but the streetscape plan calls for things that are much different than just the maintenance work. So, it would have helped if the public was fully informed. So, if the public was misled, it's the job of the city council to do their best to make sure. You knew that the problem entailed the website and you cured that, hopefully, by paying more money to expand the search engine, the browser, the networking device.
Okay.
So, that's why I think it should be helpful.
All right.
But I'll give you my document request later so we can maybe find out exactly where those modifications are and maybe even get around to putting them on the website so the public's more fully informed when it gets around to telling us about what you planned. Thank you.
My name's Dale Pierce. I have a business in town. I own property and my family's been here since the 1850s. And I would like to start tonight by thanking the city council for the work that you do. It's a very difficult job and when I look at the agenda tonight, I notice that there are some fairly complicated issues, contracts, documents that the city council has to peruse. And I actually feel that probably it's almost not humanly possible for you guys to read all of those things, discuss them in detail. Now, having said that, there are some issues that I am in opposition to the city council on. I'm not going to talk about exactly why I do not support the roundabout plan, but what has become obvious to me is that there are some very talented and intelligent people who've been speaking to the city council. I'm thinking about the gentleman who retired from selling heavy equipment, who's prepared to talk about buying equipment. And what I feel specifically in the issue of the roundabout is the city council members probably do not have time to look at the details of everything that is coming before you. You are the ultimate deciders. You will always have that authority. But my suggestion is, is that the city council needs to improve its relationship with the public, the ability to have two-way communications with the public, the way to have information come back to you guys, to look at the details because the details actually matter. Now, I'm a resident of Diamond Springs. I'm on the Diamond Springs Community Advisory Committee. My suggestion is, is that I think Placerville needs something like that. And the specific instance that I would suggest to you is you're going to probably have trouble selling a sales tax increase to people because there has not been enough community involvement to establish where the money's going to go, what it's going to be spent on, and how well it will be used. And as a member of the public, I don't think you've done that yet.
Okay. That's coming up on the agenda later on, so it's not appropriate this time.
The issue is that the city council, I think, needs to expand its outreach and its ability to take public input. I don't think that you guys can, for example, look at all the details of a cabbie contract in the time that you have available to you tonight.
Thank you.
And I think that there are some useful people in the community that the city council should be reaching out to in some way.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else approaching the agenda, lecturing, I'll pause off public comment. Okay. At this time, we're on consent calendar. And the consent calendar has been changed so that item 8.11 will be shown under item nine, under items pulled from consent calendar, be under discussion at that point. At this point in time, do I have any...
A move for consent with the changes that you addressed.
Been moved.
Second.
And seconded. At this point, are there any questions or any other questions or concerns? Okay. Any comments from the public at large on any item under consent calendar? Seeing nobody approaching the podium, I'll call for the question. Would you please call for it?
Vice Mayor Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay. That passed unanimously. Item nine is items pulled from the consent calendar and that would be item 8.11, adoption of a resolution amending the salary and benefit provisions for employees of the confidential executive management and supervisory units. Mr. Warren?
I think Mr. Morris is going to carry this one.
Oh, Mr. Morris. Sorry. I didn't like the agenda.
We'll tag team it if necessary. Each year, we do... Well, earlier this year, we did negotiations, completed negotiations with both our miscellaneous unit, Local 39, and with our police unit, and those contracts are currently in place. As part of the process we do each year after that, we also look at adopting resolutions that define the benefits and salary provisions for three unrepresented units, which include our confidential unit, supervisory unit, and executive management unit. Tonight, in closed session, the council discussed potential differences between the miscellaneous unit agreement that is currently in place and provisions that might be given to these three units. After discussion in that meeting, the council elected essentially to continue with the same contract that was agreed to with the miscellaneous unit with possibly one exception, and that is that this contract, this resolution will only go through one year. It'll only be through the 2014-15 fiscal year where the miscellaneous unit agreement continues into the following fiscal year, into December of 2015. So, with that, I would request that the council adopt these three resolutions as referred to in your staff report for the executive management unit, supervisory unit, and the confidential unit.
All right. Any questions of staff at this point from councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll open it up for public comment for item 8.11.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and former Forest Service employee. And the federal pension is that you contribute 7.5 percent of your salary, period. That's part of your employment. And for the city to have been paying the entire retirement pension for people, I think, is a little out of line. That's why government at the local level and state levels have grown their pension fund deficit so large where the federal is not that large. So, I would applaud the idea that people should be paying into their own retirement. So, thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing nobody approaching the podium, I'll close that public hearing. Okay.
I make a motion that we approve item 8.111 with recommendation by the Director of Finance.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Hall and Saver?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? Okay. We are now at item 10. There's no items scheduled under ordinances and under public hearings, we are at this point to adopt a resolution approving the engineer's report attached to the staff report confirming...
Wait, a little move. Right here.
11.1.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Forgive me.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
She was on vacation last week.
Sorry about that.
All right. So, Mr. Warren, would you follow up on this report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is part two of a two-part series and is routine in nature. Part one occurred at your meeting held on May 27th when the city council adopted a resolution declaring its intention to provide the annual levy and collection of assessments for the city's landscape, lighting, and maintenance districts as required by state streets and highways code. Part two requires the council to hold a public hearing, which is scheduled for tonight, and adopt a resolution approving the two engineer's reports before you. The city currently has two LLMDs, Orchard Hill and Cottonwood Park. The engineer's reports for both districts present status quo budgets and levy amounts. The current level of assessments for both districts are adequate in covering the costs for operating and maintaining the districts in fiscal year 1415. So, tonight, we respectfully request the council to approve the 2014-2015 LMD assessments by adopting the resolution as presented. And that's it.
Any questions of Mr. Warren on this issue?
No.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up for public hearing, taking comments at the podium regarding this adoption of this resolution. Okay. Seeing nobody approaching the podium, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action.
Move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We need a roll call vote on this.
I'll call a roll call. Vice Mayor Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember... Excuse me. Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay. Items 12, and I believe we moved 12.5 up to hold first because we have some consultants in the room. Item 12.5 is adopt a resolution certifying the Western Placerville Interchange Project final supplemental environmental impact report dated June 2014. And Mr. Rivas. Pierre Rivas. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You changed your name again.
I'll take this one. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. A little background on the Western Placerville Interchanges Project. Sorry, I got the wrong slide up there. You might recall, this has been a long time in the making. Federal earmark-funded design for future and current future traffic demands at these over crossings, the Rayloria Drive over crossing there on the right of the screen and the Placerville Drive over crossing on the left. And you might recall, in November of 2005, the city certified an environmental impact report for the project, which selected alternative D, which is shown here, D for delta, that had a... included a roundabout at the intersection of Fairlane and Placerville Drive and the configuration of ramps at Rayloria Drive, this loop ramp, eastbound on-ramp, and this configuration of ramps. In May 2006, the Federal Highway Administration adopted the NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, Finding of No Sanitary Impact, and Caltrans has approved the project in January 2008. Since that time, actually from the beginning, a phased construction approach was identified as being necessary. This is a very large for the city of Placerville to undertake something of this magnitude. So, as funding becomes available, we will take little bites off of the project as we did with what's shown in red here, Phase 1A project. We just recently completed construction of a new on-ramp westbound from Rayloria Drive and realignment and improvements to Fairlane. And so, what's shown in red there is 1A. Future phases of the project, in fact, the city was successful in receiving CMAC money for Phase 1B. So, the project is to construct sidewalks from Fairlane, the government center along Fairlane, to the commercial center to the west and class-two bike lanes on Fairlane. In addition, there's a Phase 2 project, which includes the improvements here at the south side of Rayloria Drive, a eastbound off-ramp, and a realignment of the local roads to accept that ramp and intersection improvements. And that project is funded as well in the fiscal year 1617. And in addition, it received CMAC funding recently, $1.1 million for the bicycle and pedestrian components of that project. Now, as the project development team, city, Caltrans, Transportation Commission has proceeded with final design of this project, there have been certain improvements, areas that we've looked at that would be an improvement to the overall project and the greater transportation network. There were five total. I'll switch slides here. This attachment three to your staff report shows the overall project with these five areas that we identified as having changed in boxes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. The first area of change that we identified was the addition of a roundabout at Low Highway and Fornie Road. We, as part of an updated traffic analysis, that would show that a roundabout-controlled intersection would provide better traffic control due to reduction in turn conflicts, improved traffic operations, reduced accident severity, and improved air quality. Part of the identified improvements to operations are because roundabouts function better as a pair, and the project already includes a roundabout at the intersection of Fairlane. And the reason that is, we had a part of alternative D, you might recall, signalized intersection at what we call West Fornie Road where it tees into Placerville Drive. With the addition of a roundabout, the need for that controlled intersection goes away and the movements are limited such that people coming east on Fornie Road would turn right and circulate through the roundabout to make that left-hand turn. So, that would eliminate a tough, what is currently a tough left turn at Fornie Road and Placerville Drive. Roundabouts also incur reduced ongoing maintenance costs compared with signalized intersections. The second area of improvement we identified, well, this is actually a necessity coming out of the county's trouble with the bike path, getting it opened. And they do have an agreement with Caltrans on a design that will work in the interim. It would have design exceptions, substandard site distance along the main line is the concern of Caltrans. So, in our environmental document, we need to address those concerns and as part of the reconstruction of the Placerville Drive... And they do have an agreement with Caltrans on a design that will work in the interim. It would have design exceptions, substandard site distance along the main line is the concern of Caltrans. So, in our environmental document, we need to address those concerns, and as part of the reconstruction of the Placerville Drive over crossing, the construction of the abutment wall supporting the bridge, we could construct a wall in this sloped area and pull the trail back from the main line, providing the site distance that Caltrans wants. So with that improvement, we needed to expand the area of our environmental analysis. And that was shown in your staff report or in the supplemental environmental impact report. Actually, I didn't introduce that. So, all of these five changes necessitated a preparation of a supplemental environmental impact report. And I should introduce, we have Doc in Engineering in the room. They are the consulting firm that helped prepare the document. Namat Hosinon is there, Liz Diamond, the project manager, and Juan Ramos, project engineer, doing all the, all the design and really nuts and bolts engineering. So they'll be here to help answer any questions, technical nature on the environmental impact report, or changes of the project, or things that I can't answer. Okay, moving on to the changes that necessitated the preparation of the report. Number three, the addition of sidewalks and bicycle lanes up here in box number three. There's a small area outside of our original area of study that needed to be added to add those sidewalks to the existing terminus of sidewalk at the Government Center. The fourth change to the project was, had to do with park and ride, and the original environmental impact report contemplated either a park and ride at Placerville Drive, here where the bike trail is terminating, or at Ray Lawyer Drive, as shown here. Through further design, it became apparent that it would not work, the grades at, I'll go down to this exhibit. When we designed the bike path through this area, there are standards for curvature and grades, and it will be challenging to combine a park and ride with the bike path coming through here. So that, that is not identified as preferred location. Rather, at Ray Lawyer, there is a good area for this 150 space, 155, I believe, space park and ride that we have preliminary design on here. And the Eldorado County Transit Authority supports the decision to construct this single park and ride and provide the 150 spaces. The fifth change to the project is, I'll go back to the original Alternative D. The city and the county adopted a route alignment of the Ray Lawyer Drive extension that would go from this, its current location, south, past the proposed location for the Justice Center, and intersect Highway 49 east of Weber Creek. And the original design for, for that road, you know, this project would end at this intersection, and here's future Ray Lawyer Drive shown in dashed lines here. With that project in the, in the long-term plan of the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, it was determined that for the foreseeable future, decades, that rather than have traffic come to an intersection and stop when there was really no connecting road, that a preferable alternative would be to make Fornie Road the dominant road in the near term, and as shown here on the Attachment 3, future Ray Lawyer Drive extension teeing into, to that road. And we have it shown here in a location opposite the driveway to the park and ride. And... I don't know. Liz or Namat, would you care to speak on the process we just went through on the draft EIR circulation, the comments?
The process involved with the supplementary EIR was specifically related to the changes that Nate just identified. So the five different locations, we wanted to bring that back out to the public and make sure the public was aware what's changed from the original document to this supplemental document. In the course of SEQA and the analysis required under SEQA, the mitigation that changes is what's really required to be recirculated to the public.
Nate, can we bring back the five changes? Thank you.
So what SEQA requires us to do is bring an environmental document back out to the public if there's a new significant impact, or if there's a change to a mitigation measure. So the mitigation measures that change from the original document to now are identified specifically with the, with looking at the hazardous waste. There was a missed hazardous waste environmental mitigation. So the striping and the lead-based paint, that wasn't identified in the original environmental document, so it is now, and how we can deal with it and take care of it and have the contract dispose of it properly. That's one change in mitigation. A second mitigation measure that was changed had to do with the number of elderberry bushes that were going to be impacted by the project. The original project had a much lower number. It was 2005. They've grown a lot since that time period. And then the small changes that have been made as far as the Area 4 and 5 with the park and ride lot, that area had quite a few more elderberry bushes right there. So that's a new mitigation, a new mitigation associated with going back out to Fish and Wildlife Service and providing, obtaining permits from them. So that was a second mitigation measure. A third mitigation measure was related to the number of trees that are being removed and how the project is going to take care and deal with tree mitigation as a whole. There's a change made from, I believe it was a 12 to 1 ratio in the original environmental document for any tree, and we've changed that to be consistent with the county standard of a 3 to 1 ratio of removed trees, and that's anything 6 inches or greater at breast height. So that was a change in mitigation measure to be consistent with the rest of the county. Those were the major environmental mitigation measures that were changed, and that's what necessitated the recirculation and the supplemental EIR. And at that same time, we also wanted to identify all the five locations that Nate hit earlier. So with that process, we've gone back out to the public. We've received public comments, about 10, 12 public comments. Those have been responded to, letters have been sent out, and all the agencies have been responded to. And now, that environmental document, which now becomes a final environmental document, has also been posted on the city's website and is available for publics to review. So, any questions? Now we're here for certification of it.
Yeah, thank you, Namat. And I don't have anything further in my report, so I'm available to take questions this time.
Ms. Thomas?
Oh, thank you. First of all, I have to commend our staff, especially you, Nate, for you've worked inordinately hard on this project. So really appreciate all your efforts. And I do have a quick question on mitigation measure 3.13-2. That's the coordinating construction with adjacent businesses. And I'm particularly talking about the low highway intersection and that area. I noticed in the public comment section where the CHP certainly had a concern about access. And my question is, what about the property owners' access in and out of their businesses? I'm especially thinking about the space we're in and out in Schlotzky's Deli is, as well as Thompson's Toyota. Have those property owners been contacted? And I'm sure there's ways to mitigate the construction, but I, you know, that is the only way in and out of their businesses. And I, and I didn't see, I saw that in measure 13.13-2, that we're going to coordinate construction with adjacent businesses, and it talks about parking lots, but what about access?
Good question. Liz Diamond with Doc in Engineering. Certainly during the final design process, and we take so many things that we do for granted that we probably could have been a little bit more detailed. So certainly, we will maintain, this project, part of the project is not funded for construction or final design, but when it does get to that stage, should it get to that stage, it is very typical that a traffic management plan is prepared. It's also required by Caltrans, especially with these ramps off of the freeway. And although there might be some staged construction where one driveway would be open at one time and another at another time, typical practice is to canvas folks and let them know what's going on, and also to ask them what their needs are. We have CHP, for example, right on the corner. That's kind of a special need. So we would maintain access to all properties during construction. There might be a Saturday or a Sunday or a Tuesday or whatever, where like a conform pave is done that's coordinated. But we typically make temporary provisions so that they can always get in and out.
Okay.
And be very sensitive to their business needs as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. One of the things that I know that, when we had this Option D alternative come back, and we approved the roundabout at this location, one of the reasons, we eliminated two sets of four-way stops or signals. Not every time that there's a traffic light showing on these plans does it necessarily mean it's a signalized intersection. It could be a stop signs for a wow. But the other thing, the key thing here, in my opinion, is from a business standpoint, is that saves 1.5 million in construction costs by eliminating two signals, improving traffic flow, and installing a roundabout at that location. And again, it was an option that we had back in 2005, I believe, but at that point, we pushed on, on the single roundabout at Fair Lane, because that is such a, that's a five-way interchange, and it is so goofy with signals right now, that it became the very obvious first step. This other, I don't think this location was available when we did it, because I think they were concerned about property take. Now that we know the size and more specific engineering drawings, this became easier to put at this thing without any, my understanding is, there is no right-of-way acquisition at that roundabout. It's all existing public land. So I think that's another important thing, in addition to the cost savings to the public. That roundabout really does make some sense. Again, I'm talking about the Western Placerville Drive interchange. I'm not talking about any other roundabouts in town. I want to make that clear, that I am talking about this item that we're looking at right now. So, does anybody else have any other questions at this point? Okay. So at this point, I believe I should open it up for a public hearing. And so, people with comments or questions could come to the podium. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, Vicky Placerville. The questions for the engineering group here. What makes, when you just...
Excuse me. If you have questions?
Just so I can show them what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I want to, what I'm trying to find out is, I did a response, and they referenced some reports that they are using as a reference. There's newer reports than the ones they're referencing.
Okay.
And I wanted to know why.
I'll let them answer that. Thank you.
Because most of it's safety oriented that I'm concerned about.
Regarding which, in a particular area, which area on the change in the, this environmental impact?
No, actually, all of them. I've had a concern about the safety measures for a really long time, and they seem to be addressing auto-to-auto collisions, but they don't dwell into the people versus car.
Okay. So the, so in other words, that's what I was trying to get specifically, you know, so we're talking about pedestrian safety?
Yeah, because there are safety measures they can use, but they're going to cost the city money if they do it.
Okay.
And I don't know if, if you're going to look into that. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll let them answer that. In the meantime, Mr. Smith, you had, you started to get up?
Well, I did, because I have two concerns. The one is in that lower corner on the right, I understand, services the proposed courthouse for the county. Is that correct? Do I have that from here direction correct? That'll shorten my comments if I'm not correct. That is the one that's being pointed to on the far right. That's the one that would be giving access to the proposed county courthouse. Is that right? And if so, that would be one of my concerns.
And the concern is?
Well, assuming that's correct, now, so I can save you some time, that is correct. So that...
That is the access to the courthouse, I believe.
Okay. Because...
Are we talking about this, this driveway here?
Yeah, the lower, the lower portion, this is to service...
The jail. That serves the jail.
Beg your pardon?
That serves the jail.
And it's also the area where the proposed county courthouse is.
The courthouse would be served off of the Ray Lawyer Drive extension.
Okay. And I think that's what concerns me. If you, if you want to support the new county courthouse, please say so. But when I've raised it in the past, the answer is, oh, well, that's the state. They own the state. And when I pointed out a couple years to you, years ago, about a problem of traffic, safety issues on Sacramento Street, the answer is, well, we can't touch that. That's Caltrans. And then a couple months later, members took pride in pointing out they had, had influence with Caltrans to install a traffic signal on, on Columbus Street. So you have influence, and it's appropriate to stand up for that. Why? Because it impacts the people of this town. You close that courthouse, the historic courthouse, and it means major impact on business for all kinds of businesses, not just restaurants. So you have a chance to do that. And when I've raised this in the past, Carl, it's been kind of like what was said a moment ago by the staff. We've gone over this before. It's been well-developed and explained before, or your expression before was, you're too late for the party. That's just like last week. The streetscape plan was discussed some time ago. They're both the same. Times have changed. We don't have the money. Why are we spending money, taxpayer money for the city, to support some enterprise down there? In 1969, the Civil Grand Jury Report recommended tearing the old city hall down. A number of civic leaders stopped that to save it. And at that time, John, State Senator John Briggs had that property down there. So the whole idea of developing that and being supportive of that doesn't pass the smell test. That's one issue. So that's my concern. If you want to support closing this courthouse as a courthouse, go ahead and take a vote on it. But don't support something that facilitates doing that when subsolento, you wind up endorsing that, because that's exactly what this is. That plan isn't just the courthouse. It also facilitates, or the jail, but also facilitates the courthouse. So that's one problem. The other is, and you'll have to excuse me if I keep trying to look for consistency on ethics rules, but I remember when Trish Wilkins was asked to recuse herself on the matter of the roundabout because she, or something related to Marshall Hospital, because she lives close to the hospital. Doesn't have any financial remuneration. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know the proximity between Carl Hagan's property on the other roundabout...
It's well beyond 500 feet.
500 feet?
It's well beyond that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, is that your standard? I'm just asking for...
That's the state standard, not mine.
And that would be the one that was used for Trish Wilkins?
Yes.
500 feet? Okay. So that's the standard?
It depends on what it is. It's 300 or 500 feet. And there are certain things that we do not have to recuse ourselves on in general, and I would use like Main Line Highway 50 or Main Line Placerville Drive, even though my property is adjacent to it, as yours is.
Exactly.
We don't have to recuse ourselves.
But I'm not elected.
No, I know. But I just wanted to point it out in the, in proximity wise.
I think the other rule on your, on your website is that you disclose it, but, and then I wouldn't have to ask these questions. But those are my two concerns.
Okay. Congratulations. One of these days, I'm going to applaud, maybe. Anyhow, and so at this point, are there any other comments or concerns regarding the area of this environmental impact report?
Having worked for the Forest Service, which is right off of Fornie Road, next to Thompson's, between what used to be the Midas Muffler Shop and Ford Garage, which is now part of Thompson's, and having numerous, seen numerous very near misses on that intersection, I'm really pleased to see you designed it this way so that you don't have people coming up this hill, forget to stop, and the people trying to come out of the road who can't see down the hill get creamed. So I, and looking at coming across that overpass, going towards Rayleigh's, that has always been a problematic, terrible intersection. You've got, it's malfunction junction. There's too many stoplights and too many, and how many times I've sat at the bridge and wondered if I'm going to get rear-ended by the person who's looking not at the stoplight that controls the bridge, but the one further across that turns green, and then they want to go. So I think that, overall, I think this will solve quite a few problems in traffic in that area.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Any additional questions or comments? Okay, at this point, I'd like to call maybe one of the consultants up to answer Mr. Smith's questions and I believe, and Ms. Clark's questions, so. The pedestrian issue was first, I believe, so maybe Liz, you can answer that?
Certainly, I'll provide some information. In the response to comments, I'm going to forget her last name, Vicky?
Clark.
Clark, did provide a comment, it was comment five, and there was a response to comment, and it focused mostly on pedestrians. There were other comments related to roundabouts as well, and I would mention that their response to comment number one is, goes into more detail and also provides additional information and resource, background information about roundabouts in general and pedestrian conflicts. One of the things I think is important when you look at a roundabout instead of a traffic signal, in each location, it's important to really look at it and decide what's the best application. Obviously, in this one, we're recommending, believe, the roundabouts are the appropriate traffic control device. When you are, think about when you're driving a car and you're approaching a signalized intersection and where you're looking. The person driving the car is typically looking to the person's going to turn left, that he wants to go past, even if he's turning right, he's looking over here. And the person that usually gets run over is stepping off the curb here, often when the walk turns, because they're getting the walk when the green light is going and then the person turns right. And they're supposed to look and make sure it's clear, but people are looking this way, not where the pedestrian is. In a roundabout, the pedestrians are pulled back further around the corner and they're typically set up so you're crossing only one direction, a travel at one time as well. When you go out into a crosswalk, you've got cars going this way and you've got cars going the other way. So you're looking this way as a pedestrian, you're looking the other way as a pedestrian. So when you cross a roundabout as a pedestrian, you've got, first, traffic going slower because the curvature on these newer-designed roundabouts is intended to slow cars down as they enter and exit the roundabout. And as they cross the lanes, they're looking at one direction of traffic before there's another refuse area. So when you look at the statistics of pedestrian vehicle conflicts, they're lower in a roundabout than they are in traffic signals for the history of time, you know, that they've been looked at, based on the research we've done. We do attend training and conferences. Caltrans facilitates them, consulting firms that do this kind of work. National Transportation Safety Board has information on them annually back at their Transportation Research Board Conference. So, you know, our opinions are based on these influence. So there are some exhibits and additional information and response ones that I wanted to mention. Relating to the second question, as it relates, and maybe Nate, you could help me by putting the picture of the parking lot and, you know, the park and ride lot and the driveway. Well, he's doing that, I wanted to point out in general, when we do these kinds of major improvements on a highway and we have to project, will this work? The typical test is, will it work 20 years after it's built? So when we go to Caltrans and say, can we play on your freeway? Can we add a lane? Or can we put a ramp? You know, they have certain protocols that we have to go through in order to design the new facility and to gain their approval. So when they looked at this facility, which, you know, includes both interchanges and the auxiliary lanes and the ancillary roadway improvements on the frontage roads, et cetera, their requirement was, well, when do you think all of it will be funded? When would it be reasonable to assume that there might be money to build all of it? So we worked, you know, with the city and with the Transportation Commission and looked at different programs and said, well, you know, it's certainly not all going to be funded, let's say, in the next STIP cycle or the next grant program, maybe by the one after the next one. So 2025 was the reasonable year to assume it could possibly all be built. And then they required us to project traffic 20 years beyond that. So the traffic projections for this project go to 2045. So that's a pretty far projection. Now, Grant, you, it gets a little more, you know, plus or minus the farther out you project. So the way these, these facilities work, or these studies work, when you're working on an interchange like this, it is going to serve growth for the county. It's not like this is a corner lot in a small community. Growth anywhere in not only the city, but growth in the region between now and 2045 is going to affect Highway 50 and these ramps as people come and go. And so as you do the traffic study, you create these traffic area, traffic analysis zones. And then, you've probably heard, the county has a traffic model. SACOG has a traffic model. They have very large traffic analysis zones. When you start doing projects like this, you break them down. So in the case of the accesses here at the off-ramp and at Ray Lawyer and Fornie Road, you start to look at then, one might go on in that traffic analysis zone that's going to access Fornie Road or Ray Lawyer. So you work with the land use plan, so you talk to Pierre and Nate, you call up the county, and you look at the land use projections. And they project employment, commercial business, different types of use. So for the TAS, or the traffic analysis zone, I'm going to call it a TAS, that feeds what will be the future Ray Lawyer Drive, and we say, we are then required to look at, in 2025, what might be there, and in 2045, what might be there. And so we huddle and decide, okay, based on SACOG's projections, based on the county's land use plans, what might be there? Well, there's all kinds of talk of a courthouse. You have the Briggs Ranch development that's approved. So if you're looking at it from a, you hope this major investment that the city may make isn't too small the day it opens, you have to assume some kind of land use up Ray Lawyer Drive. So in the project traffic study, we looked at, well, there is no funding on the horizon to get Ray Lawyer Drive all the way to 49, but there's an awful lot of talk about something going on, whether it's a court or a Target or a Walmart or something. So we looked at different, you know, generations and we made sure we loaded enough traffic onto the stub of Ray Lawyer Drive, or the Phase One Ray Lawyer Drive, to account for, should a court be approved, or should Briggs Ranch go forward? And should other background growth in that TAS occur as well? Because if we didn't, even if the courts goes away and something else goes in there and you build this, it'll be too small. So, you know, we, we do the best we can to come up with a number of trips that is reasonable so that you make a smart investment when you're so close to Hawaii, a highway like this. You have to assume something will go somewhere. And so in the 2025 projection, we assumed enough development that things like Briggs Ranch, the courts, and some other service commercial in that area would fit. And we looked at that and said, would a T-intersection work? And where is the dominant move? And we worked with our traffic consultant and, you know, of course, was reviewed by a number of people, Caltrans, staff, et cetera, et cetera. And we looked at where was the dominant move? And we still find that even with that loading, the traffic on Fornie, there's more cars going back and forth on Fornie than turning up that street or turning out of that street. And so that's part of the reason for the recommendation to, to smooth Fornie, to accommodate the major move, and have Phase One Ray Lawyer tee in. Now, having said that, then along comes 2045. What do you assume in 2045? Well, you assume more growth, more background traffic, and you look at it again. In the project traffic report, we did not assume the connection to 49 because in working with the Transportation Commission and the city, it was like, well, you know, funding, it's in the plan, it's important to protect the corridor, but we can't really assume it'll be there. Think of it from Caltrans' point of view. If you assume it's there, it might pull traffic somewhere else and then this won't be big enough. So you take the conservative approach, there's no money identified. Now, having said that, the County of Eldorado submitted a comment, I forget which number it is in here, but the county submitted a comment and said, well, what about that? And so we said, well, you know what? We'll run the model again with the connection. Because maybe, you know, the concern they had was with this T-intersection, maybe eventually it would be the wrong configuration. You know, our thought was, well, you know, in 2045, who cares? You can reconfigure the corner. But as it turns out, we did run that traffic, traffic analysis, and even with those projections and the diversion of traffic that that would cause, we believe the T-intersection will still work the best. You'll still have more traffic on Fornie. So with that, we're, we're pretty pleased with, with the layout of Fornie and the extension of Ray Lawyer that you see here. And then the third speaker, I don't think there was, there was a question, I think they were just offering comments. So I hope that's?
That's correct.
A start, anyway?
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much for answering those questions. The staff now, or I'll bring it back to the board, and do you have any particular additional questions or comments?
I do have a comment, Mr. Mayor, if that's all right? I would just like to clear up, maybe a potential misleading comment and be very clear that this council and the staff does not support the closing of the Main Street courthouse. The state is, will decide to do that. What we do strongly support, that if the state decides that another alternative location needs to be found, we strongly support keeping it in Placerville. And that is what we're working on. Because it came down to whether it moves to Placerville or whether it moves to a site in Cameron Park. And I know Jack Sweeney and many other people were very diligent about making, ensuring that our county courthouse remains in the seat, you know, the county seat, which is Placerville. And so what we are committed to, if that, if that does happen, is, you know, looking at a public process to repurpose and reuse the old courthouse and keep it a vibrant historical asset while building connectivity to the new courthouse site from downtown. So just wanted to state that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, at this time, I'll request action.
I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution certifying that the Western Placerville Interchange Project final supplemental environmental impact report dated June 2014 was prepared in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and adopting the California Environmental Quality Act findings of fact for the Western Placerville Interchange Project, adopting that the June 2014 Western Placerville Interchange Project mitigation moderating plan is modified and approving the modified Alternative D as the city's preferred project design and direct staff to prepare plans, specifications, and estimates for this project.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to take action on item 12.5. So call, roll at this point, please.
Vice Mayor Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Hagan?
Aye.
Councilmember Patton?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much for docking, for showing up here and helping us through this process. At this point, then, we'll move to 12.1. This would be, adopt a resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 operating budget and capital improvement program budget for, as presented. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As a review, over the past six months, the city's budget team, which is comprised of the city manager and all department heads, developed both the proposed operating and capital improvement program budgets that embrace the council's established fiscal policies and overall goals and objectives, considering the financial resources available at this time. As part of the budget development process, the council held a capital improvement program workshop on January 23rd, a goal-setting workshop on March 20th, a budget workshop on May 22nd, and a budget open hearing on June 10th. We like to talk about budget. To ensure that, ensure transparency for the public as well as continual refinement of the budget before you tonight. Both the proposed operating budget and capital improvement program budget include the same assumptions that were discussed at the budget open hearing held on June 10th, including the request for alternative service levels, capital outlay items, conference training and travel expenses. The proposed operating budget is balanced and totals $17,338,856, of which $7,492,456 is for general fund uses. The proposed capital improvement program budget totals $382,368, includes seven new projects ranging from repairing the police department entryway to improving crosswalks along Broadway. It's important to note that your budget is a living document that can be revised at any time. I would like to publicly thank the budget team, city employees, and the city council for once again, working together to balance this year's budget, which is a responsible plan that will help ensure the city remains fiscally sound. And with that, I respectfully request the city council to approve the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented.
All right. Does, do you have any questions at this time? Carol?
I have a few, just a couple. I was wondering if it would be possible to request that the community promotions budget line item be increased from $7,500 to $15,000? And I don't know how the other council members feel about that. My thought is that we had a request earlier this year from Mike Kobus for the ice skating rink, but if the request from him, he could, in fact, could probably use that entire amount of money. And that leaves nothing left for Community Pride, Downtown Association, or Broadway Village, or should any of the other areas of Placerville request money? And I know that they haven't, but partly because there hasn't been any money. So for years, I know for a fact that the Downtown Association requested, I don't know, maybe $5,000 and sometimes more. So I would respectfully ask if the council would consider adding $7,500 to that particular line item, and I don't know if Dave can find it somewhere in his magic hat? But, so that was one of my requests. I don't know, I'd like to hear if there's any feedback on that.
I guess I'd, I guess I'd like to know where that would be coming from. And, I mean, at this point, you know, we've gone over the budget a lot, and if, if it was improbable to add that at this point, what would happen if, if we did get a request from a, you know, a community group that seemed reasonable at a later date? How would that, where would, what would, how would we handle that? So I guess I'd like, yeah, to figure that out.
Sure, you have a few options. Your general fund is balanced, that's where the community promotions line item comes from. So right now, you have a balanced budget. If you increase your expenditures by 7,500, that puts you in a deficit state of 7,500. One thing you could do, you have a $75,000 contingency, you could reduce your contingency to 67,500. Or you could perhaps, at mid-year budget, if it looks like we have a surplus, perhaps appropriate an additional 7,500 at that time. That typically happens late February, early March.
Okay. Going to make a comment on it. Either way, if you decide to increase that or not, I'd, I'd like to suggest that the staff could consider bringing back some sort of program where maybe there's a competitive process for competing for those funds, where everybody comes in and asks for them, at the same time, you evaluate those equally. Because I've seen quite often where one person comes in the beginning of the year. You know, perhaps we could look at this mid-year and make that deadline, say, February 1st or something, or earlier. I know that may be a problem with some of the programs, such as the ice skating, Mike Kobus. So, but anyway, I would recommend that we do something like that to, to make it open to all of those organizations that we want to look at, so.
And I, I agree. Because as Cleve said, the ice skating rink was brought to us, however, they had a lot of what-ifs. I mean, they're, they're not for sure what they're going to do yet either. So I, I kind of think maybe that's a good idea until we find out. And, you know, just like the fellow that was here about the goldpining thing that's coming up, he also indicated they would like money. There's a lot of people out there want money and they're all worthwhile and I wish we could give it all to them, but I, I think, I really think we ought to hold off.
So, okay, so how would that look? And I'm, I'm kind of unsure, so in February, if the council said, yeah, we could increase, I mean, right now, we have $7,500 allocated in this year's budget. And then, but if we said that by February 1st, if other community groups wanted to apply for that in a competitive bid process, we might, at that point, increase the funding to 15,000 or?
You'd probably actually look at it as part of your mid-year budget, which generally is about the first meeting in February, Dave?
It's usually the second meeting or first meeting in March.
Okay. So I don't know if that puts it too late for what you want to do, but that would be the optimal time to determine if that additional funding was there. Otherwise, your other choice, as Dave mentioned, would be to use contingency. And you could consider your contingency at mid-year also. If, if, you know, we haven't spent hardly any of that, you could consider taking, you know, 5, 7,500 from it at that point.
Well, and we're not specific on the 7,500 for any one item, it's for community promotion. So it's still, at this point, in my opinion, it's still competitive. So if we got a request from community So, if we got a request from Community Pride for $2,000, and we got Downtown Association needed $2,000, I mean, those are all items we could look at and decide. We're not -- nothing has been promised to anybody. We've tried to build some back into us, and I think the $7,500 is a good starting place to go. So, it's not set for any one item project or...
It's a beginning.
Okay. Perfect. I mean, I just, I would like to see it.
Good idea.
If we can, I'd like to see it increased as we move forward and maybe get more money. But, yeah, the competitive bidding process, I like.
The mid-year seems a good way to take a look at that again.
For the increase.
To increase that from $7,500.
We could use competitive at this point.
To compete for the $7,500.
Just like they decide on grants, you know, like the Women's Fund. And, you know, if people submit requests and they tell why they want it, and, you know, then so much is given for each, you know. We could do something like that.
And I also have one other item, and I brought it up. And it has to do with the gate on Placerville Drive Bridge. And I know Mayor Hagan was an opponent of mine on this, but I'm going to say it again, that I absolutely disagree with the use of a gate on a main artery in our town, and for a couple of reasons. And one of them is that those gates are used typically, you see them on Iron Mountain Road or Mormon Immigrant Trail, or in a lot of areas that are actually closed. And what happens is, then, the road doesn't get plowed, and the road doesn't get taken care of. And you can put it down for safety reasons for the people, for the service providers, which is what I, how I think it was, why it was put on the budget. But my fear is that that gate comes down, and we don't get to use Placerville Drive Connection for two months. And Placerville Drive Connection was a huge selling point to this city from Caltrans. And I understand that the problem with ice is a problem. But I also understand that snow removal is an art, and you have to be really proactive at it. Sanding and bulldozing, or scraping are part of doing business on roads. And I would just ask the council to think about not allowing a permanent gate on Placerville Drive. And that's a $30,000 line item right there.
My opinion is that I don't think they're asking for a permanent gate. They're asking for one that won't be closed all the time. That was my understanding, is that sometimes these freezes happen in the middle of the night, and they can't get the guys out there. And it just, it will automatically, then, I guess they have a way to make this gate work and close the road off just for a period of time.
It's spaniel. It's operated by the police department.
The police would go out, they would ascertain then, but it wouldn't mean that it was going to stay closed all day or anything. It would just be...
Be closed until the ice was cleared.
Till they get the, till they get something there to...
And my understanding, Steve, Mr. Yule, if you can maybe answer this question, but my understanding was that the cost of maintaining and keeping that open without a major investment in additional equipment, to the tunes of a quarter of a million dollars or so, that we would, having spent, no, a road grader to do it would be a quarter of a million dollars, would be a lot of costs that we've, like, this past year, we incurred around $40,000 in additional snow removal, not all caused by that one location, but we had a lot in an unusual winter. There may be some winters where it's never closed. So, could you please respond?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We are a little bit different in that we don't have, we can't gear up that kind of equipment. We're not like Caltrans, where we have the same resources available to us. So, it takes me a while to dispatch the type of subcontractors we need in order to get that bridge open as quickly as we can. And that's extremely difficult to do in the middle of the night. But as the day thaws and resources become more readily available, we can get it, we can get it open promptly. This last winter, it was only closed for, I think, two days throughout the winter. And that was a really rare type of storm for us, where we had a lot of thaw and freeze going on. So, I don't, I wouldn't anticipate being it being a long-drawn-out closure. As soon as I can get the graders out there from our local contractors, then we can get it back open.
I sure appreciate your concern, Carol. I think public safety, I think, you know, trumps my concerns on this, just Steve's ability to, you know, react quickly, given the constraints of what resources we have as a city. That's just kind of the way I feel about it.
I'm going to try one more angle. I'm going to say, there are neighborhoods that get graders out in one day, and their roads are open. And this is in Pollock Pines at 4,600 feet. So, you, I'm sorry, but I don't agree that you can't get services out there to open that street, to keep it, to keep it open. I live off of Pacific Street. Pacific Street is a tremendously steep grade. And I think, as long as I've lived up on that hill, it might have been closed once with barricades. So, I mean, it's just, to me, we're sending the wrong message. Our general plan says no gates in this town, and here we are putting up what I consider a road closure gate, just like they use at the national parks.
I'm going to, we do not applaud, or scream, or yell, or cheer, or jeer during our meetings. So, we'd appreciate it if you no longer did that.
Cleve, in the, some of the meetings that we've had on the two-by-two, didn't we talk about maybe somehow this cooperative effort with the county, and that this might be something that might come under that heading?
Possibly could. Like I say, the problem is, and you talk about Pollock Pines and what they're able to do, but that's, you know, the county has equipment that's designed for snow plowing. We don't have as much. But, and we do, we have contracts with some of our contractors that have the appropriate equipment that's necessary for removing the snow on that road. But yes, we have talked about that. We've talked about, for instance, working with the county so that when they are going out, for example, Cedar Ravine to snowplow out in the county, that instead of dropping their plows at Lions Park, they drop them at the bottom of Cedar Ravine and help us out with snowplowing. And they're willing to talk to us about that and make things work. So, yes, there are some things that we can do in that regard.
Well, I'll, at this point, open it up for public comment regarding our budget. Seeing nobody approaching the, oops. Yes, Kathy.
Evening, Mayor Hagan and members of the council. Kathy Lishman. And I'm not representing Community Pride, but I just want to remind you, we are not a community promotion. We are part of the city, and the work we do is on city property. And I really object to the fact that we would have to compete competitively with other groups in the city that are not part of the city. So, anyway, I just had to say that. Thanks.
It should probably be under the Parks and Recreation Budget. I'm trying to figure out a place to put it. So, okay. Seeing nobody else approaching the podium, a closed public comment.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor, first of the staff. I guess the only thing that was a glaring concern, or not concerned, but just a question I had on this mid-year budget, was the $48,000 for the cemetery tree removal. That seems like an awful lot of money to remove cemetery trees and limb them. And could you just briefly, I know we've gone through this, but it was a couple of months ago for me, basically, why that is so high? And maybe could part of that, you know, be deferred till next year? And perhaps we give part of that to Community Pride to, I know they're supporting the park here at Bedford. They're raising money for that, and I just want to raise that question.
That number was derived from a preliminary arborist report, and that's just for the purpose of budgeting. And so, when we get down to it, we'll put together an RFP, and we'll put it out to all the vendors and see where that price comes in at. So, that's just a ballpark figure.
How did we arrive at that? Just a...
It's just from a local arborist in town who provided that inventory. Went through both of the, both of our cemeteries and did an inventory on each tree.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Yes.
I just want to comment, Dave, if you'd correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure that that funding is something that we could use. That's coming out of our liability fund to take care of those trees. I'm not sure that could be used for Community Pride.
That's correct. And the reason that is, is that these trees, potentially, if they were to damage other facilities or injure someone, it's a liability. So, it's proactive.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
But if we could get it done cheaper, and we don't have to spend that amount, where would it go back to? Just the liability fund?
It would mean your general liability fund would have that much more in fund balance. And really, to answer the question, I didn't fully answer the question. We're going to take a look at the general liability fund at the end of the fiscal year, at year-end close, to ensure that we have adequate funding. Because it's estimated what our fund balance is. We don't know until we close the books what that is.
And just a follow-up to that, there is a potential to phase it in also. I think we need to get the dead wood out right away.
No pun intended.
And then, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's what they call, that's what the arborists call it. And then, we also have to get some of the weighted limbs out right away. So, it could be phased in.
Right, thanks. Sorry, I couldn't resist.
Any additional comments, questions of staff? Okay. At this point, I'll look for...
I move that we adopt a resolution approving and adopting the proposed fiscal year 2014-2015 operating budget and capital improvement program budget as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you please call?
Vice Mayor Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Hagan.
Aye.
Councilmember Patton.
No.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay. I see four-one. Thank you. It's the adopt a resolution establishing November 4th as the date of the election of the pros ballot major, seeking voter approval relating to the enactment of one-half of one percent transaction and use tax, I mean, no, a sales tax for 10 years, establishing the policies and procedures for such an election, and request that the county of Eldorado conducts such election. That would be Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This item, I would compare similar to the budget. We've had this on our agenda several times now. We had a neighborhood chat that talked about it. We've had meetings on May 27th and June 10th also to get additional input. We did, as you recall, we did a phone survey, contracted with Probowlski Research to do a phone survey regarding this issue. In addition, we sent out a survey with our utility bills also to be considered and to gather as much information as possible regarding this. At this time, and based on the information of the last two meetings, staff has brought back a proposal to place a one-half cent sales tax on the ballot, which would expand, or which would go for 10 years and be, and then be eliminated after 10 years unless renewed. In order to do that, it is necessary for the council to adopt a resolution setting forth the policies and procedures necessary to implement this sales tax measure. Before the council tonight, I have presented, I have in your packet, two potential resolutions, and we'll discuss the differences in those in just a minute. I also prepared one additional option that I'm going to present to you tonight for your consideration also. I want to note that this information, the adoption of this resolution and the attached ordinance that goes with it, which will become part of our municipal code if adopted, requires a four-fifths vote of the city council in order to be adopted, or in order to adopt the resolution and place it on the ballot. So, as mentioned, the general proposal and the, something that is the same in all three options that I presented, is a half-cent sales tax for 10 years. And the other common denominator, that each of those, the primary purpose is for maintenance and repair of streets and roads. And I want to emphasize that, that is the primary purpose. All of those proposals also contain an annual oversight committee and an independent audit, which would be performed annually. So, for council's consideration tonight, is what is proposed, is a half-cent sales tax, which would be a general tax for council consideration. At the last meeting, we discussed the option of looking at a companion measure, which is sometimes done in conjunction with a general sales tax measure. The companion measure is advisory-only, and it's used to advise the council on what items would the public like the council to spend that money on. And in reviewing how this was done, there are different ways to do it. The one that I have proposed before you tonight would have the general measure on the ballot, plus three companion measures associated with those, that would spell out the, should we spend the money for roads, would be question number one. Question number two would be, should we spend it to restore historic Old City Hall? And question number three would be, should we use the funding to expand our police department and fix it, the repairs and et cetera that are necessary in our police department, in order to provide a safe facility for them? I should note that in both of these two measures, the language regarding what it could be spent for in terms of streets and roads, parking facilities, the police department, police station, and Old City Hall are included in that general ballot measure, the first ballot measure. So, including the companion measures is somewhat redundant if we were to decide to do that. Now, all of these options are still open to you. We can revise that and present that differently if it is your desire. In terms of the sunset clause of 10 years, that could be revised. The half-cent sales tax, as we've discussed early in previous meetings, could be a quarter of a cent. It could go down to an eighth of a cent, actually, if it is the desire of the council. Our recommendation and the general direction we've looked at in order to meet the needs of our deferred maintenance for streets and roads has been that a half-cent sales tax for 10 years would be the desired level of a sales tax. The third option that I would like to present to you tonight is actually somewhat simpler in that the ballot language would change. If we can pass these out, let me get them right here. In this one, the ballot language is simplified somewhat in that it simply states that, and I will read it to you, "To maintain and provide quality and safe public facilities, including maintenance and repair of local roads and maintenance, and repair of local roads and maintenance of other city facilities, shall the city of Placerville enact a half-cent sales tax with citizen oversight and annual independent audits to end after 10 years, with all funds spent only in Placerville." So, it's simplified somewhat, and it does, it removes the reference to the police station and Old City Hall. So, it simplifies it. It also does not contain, is not recommended to have the companion measures. It is simplified to just that portion. But to emphasize, the purpose in this one would be to emphasize that it is primarily for roads and parking facilities are the two that we primarily talked about to be able to maintain. I want to emphasize, however, this is still a general tax. It meets the definition of a general tax. Everywhere in the documents, referred to it as a general tax, both in the resolution and the ordinance. And therefore, it would still be as a general tax. It is still at the direction of the council what that funding is spent for, if approved.
What, I'm sorry, what page were you?
Three.
I was reading from page three of what I handed out, has the actual ballot language. And that's required.
Because in the beginning of the resolution, one second, I saw something in the red slightly different than what you were saying. Oh, it talked about the advisory companion measures. So, I thought those were eliminated in this? in this?
You're right. I apologize, I missed that. In the title, it has that.
Okay.
You're right, Mayor, that should be pulled out, because this does not include
So, it should end with tax for 10 years, period?
Well, no, because the part after, just pull out the part that says, "And three advisory measures." That should be removed.
Okay.
Apologize, thank you.
Thank you.
So, as mentioned, attached to the resolution is an ordinance. The ordinance is similar for all three, however, the other ordinance, the ordinance for the first two options does contain references to the police station and the Old City Hall. The third one would not have references to that in the whereas sections. As mentioned, if the resolution places this on the ballot, at that point, if adopted, or if voted in favor of in November, the ordinance automatically becomes law at that time. And so, there's no need to have your normal first and second reading of the ordinance. By the vote of the people, it becomes effective at that time. A couple of things, just to note, the, it has been given a schedule by the county that this should be to them by July 2nd, 2014. As you know, we have another item that will be before you on July 8th, which is a measure regarding the roundabout initiative, that we will be considering at that meeting, and the county hasn't approved that we can give that to them at that date, so after that, July 2nd. My point in that is that there may be a little bit of flexibility to that July 2nd date, but I would not recommend that we go beyond that. It's my recommendation that we proceed with this tonight, unless there's major questions that you have and concerns before we move forward with it. With that, also, the two resolutions in your packet, there was one typo that was found on page one of those resolutions. It's about the 1, 2, 3, 4, 6 paragraph down. It refers to it as a specific tax. That language needs to be changed, to refer to it as a general tax. It's just a minor thing that was left in on page one of the resolution.
Page one, I'm sorry, which line again?
Page one of the resolution, the sixth whereas, if you will, where it says, "A public hearing on June 10th, 2014, council considered calling a special election." It goes on to say, "To seek voter approval of a proposed special tax." That should be general tax there. And that's only on the two resolutions that were in your packet. The one I handed out tonight is correct. Again, just going back to, I provided information regarding the surveys that were done. Reminder, the phone survey that was completed showed about 64% were in favor of a half-cent sales tax. We also did the mail-out survey with our utility bills in May. We received about approximately 440, I believe the number is, of those to date. It currently shows approximately a 50% approval on the half-cent sales tax. Shows about a 54% on a quarter cent. And I also noted that those that would look, that looked at either a half cent or a quarter cent, or both, is about 67% at this point. So, those are just some additional statistics regarding that. I do have both of those surveys with me. I can attempt to answer any other questions that council may have, but at this point, I'd like to open up for council discussion and questions.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Morris? Any particular items?
I brought it up last time, and we were talking about using the word remodel, and this is on the first one. And I would like to see it say, repair and expansion of the city's police facility, because I think it's important to let them know that this isn't just a clubhouse we're talking about, or evidence is stored and processed there. And if we're going to put $10,000 patches on the roof to keep it from getting wet, that's not the way to deal with something as important as public safety.
I had the exact same thought, Tricia, and my word would have been the upgrade and expansion, but I like yours as well, because remodeling is too fluffy. It sounds like we're going to paint the walls a really pretty color and add some nice mirrors. Yeah.
I agree with you. So, where are you guys? You're on page three?
Page three of the first one. Page three of the first resolution.
What was your word? What was?
I used remodel and repair and expansion.
Repair and expansion rather than remodel.
Yeah, that's good. Repair, yeah. Right.
If you use that option.
And I did have a question, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
On, if we did go with the companion measures, would those three measures be directly after our ballot initiative? I mean, could we guarantee that on the ballot placement? Yeah.
I believe we can. The ones that I've seen in the past, in other jurisdictions have been, they've immediately followed those. And I believe that's a reasonable request that we can request of the council.
Because that would be incredibly confusing if it wasn't.
Right, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any additional questions, Tricia? Okay. Okay, at this point, I'll open it up for public hearing. So, anybody with questions regarding item 12.2 or statements, please make your way to the podium. Please, state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Rich. Nice to see everybody. Hello, Tricia. Nice to see you. I was born here in this county, Pollock Pines, and I've been, I've spent about 12 years outside of California. And now, I moved back, and I have a business here on Main Street, and there's some other individuals here that also have businesses on Main Street. And this is just starting to buzz around, and the fact that, you know, you guys want, or that it's going to go on the ballot to increase the sales tax. And from a business perspective, and somebody who talks to the local customers that come into our shop, they don't want that. And they've voiced to us that the higher, the more and more the tax goes up, the more and more, they won't be shopping on Main Street. They already complain about the parking and the fact that it's hard to get here. And living in Massachusetts once, where you can go across 10 minutes away to New Hampshire and not pay any sales tax, I can tell you that Massachusetts loses a lot of customers, because their people just drive over to where they don't have to pay sales tax. And I grew up in this town, proud of Plaserville, and like, where we come from, and through sitting here, it seems like we want to drive people away from our cool, hangtown, local strip here. And this is what we want to attract people to. And a lot of individuals have told me that the tourists will pay for it, and that's where this half a percent is supposed to come up from. And it sounds like it's going, like, if this was passed, then I'll do everything I can. And I know the other businesses on Main Street and in town will do the same, to make sure that it doesn't pass. But if it does, it doesn't even sound like you know where the money's going to go. It's going to go in the general fund. And if we need to restore those three measures that you're talking about, I think you can find other ways through the budget or through fundraising than to take it directly from your own residences, your residents right here in this town, and make it harder for the businesses, the business owners, the individuals who do not make a salary, but who depend on the tourists and the local community to support us, so that we can continue to be a cool place for people to come and see, and not a sprawling suburban area of big-box stores. You know, I think we need to take another look at this and understand that we're, we on Main Street are like, very against it. And it's not just Main Street, it's the rest, it's other businesses in the proximity. And it's like, eight and a half percent, I mean, California is already high enough, and now we're going to go up to eight and a half. It's not going to work. And to have it for 10 years, to just say, oh, I'm so grateful that we can put it on the ballot and have time to make sure that we get the votes out to say, and that's my understanding, I'm only 34, and I'm just kind of getting into, you know, this whole government workings, and I'm very proud that, you know, we do have a chance to stop this. But, I mean, from somebody who grew up here, to try to separate and make it so people would not want to shop in our area, but they would go somewhere else, so that they could avoid paying more, and to depend on customers going from San Francisco to Tahoe, to pay for our police stations and our roads, and to redo our courthouse, and then again, like you said, it's just going in the general fund anyway. And that's all I have to say right now, but
Thank you.
You know, so, I just want to be clear that this is a measure to go on the ballot, which will be a vote.
Correct, that's what we're looking at.
And given every opportunity to be terminated, right? It's not, because I see you guys passing things like, oh, we're going to pass it, so, just want, just for clarity. Yeah? And I do resent-
That's what the resolution says, so, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. And I also want to say that I think it's unconstitutional and not cool to say you can't clap at your own council meeting.
I'm sorry, but that happens to be the decorum. I don't know what is in your business, but same in my business, too. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening. I'm Wilbur Howes, CNH Motorparts. To raise a sales tax, to reiterate what the gentleman said, for us in our type of business, it creates three sales taxes. You have, if I deliver parts to people in the county, I have to charge the county sales tax. I have agriculture, which is logging in some of the ranches. They only pay two and three-quarters cents. So, for a business like mine, that I'm competing with people on Missouri Flat Road, or wherever out of the city, I'm higher. It doesn't make any difference to the garages, because they have a resale permit. But for us, it is a bookkeeping nightmare. And I would strongly advise you guys not to do it.
I'm David Fausel from Plasterville Hardware. And our customers, you know, we sort of are nuts and bolts kind of a place, even though this town has become a great tourist place, too. And it's true that, I mean, there are a lot of tourists, and maybe the tourists could play, could pay this, but we try to keep our business local, and we have a lot of local customers that buy a lot of things from us, and that the people out there, I don't know where you took, who you called, or where you got your numbers, but, I mean, we have old-time customers that come from all over the county, not just inside the city limits. But, and they're well aware of what they're paying in taxes. And it doesn't seem like a lot, but it all adds up. And eventually, these little things keep pecking away at us. And just, we're not in favor of this. Thank you.
Any additional?
Sue Rodman, and I know we have discussed this several times, because I have given you my comments several times. And my comments are still the same. I am not willing to work for or vote for a measure that will do City Hall, other facilities, the police station, because I've seen a wide variety of city councils in this city since I came to be a resident here, and some of them I trust. This is one of the better city councils I've seen. But I've seen some others that I wouldn't trust with two cents, let alone a general tax that can be used for anything. This looks like, okay, we'll give you your wish list. Here's your, here's your, just add your laundry list to this. And so, if it's going to be used for facilities in general, and not specifically for roads, streets, parking, storm drains, sidewalks, gutters, the things that are related to our city infrastructure for managing traffic and movement of people and cars, then I'm sorry, but I will not vote for it, and I will not support it. I think that if the measures in here, the companion measures were binding, what we would see, like we saw on the returns from the mail-in surveys, is that 71% would be more likely to vote for it. That means 69% would be less likely to vote for it. That's more than your two-thirds. And 60% would be less likely if it includes Old City Hall. So, I think that, you should ought to take a look at the reverse of those, of those numbers. And, you know, 77% are not satisfied with the conditions of our roads. Well, that means there's less than 30% that are satisfied. And 80% feel that we should be seeking more funding, yeah. I agree with both of those. Our roads are in pretty bad shape in a lot of places, and I would like to see us seek more funding. But I will not vote for a sales tax that can be gone into the general fund and be used for whatever facilities anybody dreams up.
Good evening. Dave Machado, I own a couple of businesses on Main Street that all pay sales tax, or generate sales tax. So, I understand your search for revenue. I really do. I've been in your shoes. I know the roads. But I'm really not happy with your plan of action tonight. A half percent, I get it, but you're hearing the reaction you're going to get if you put this on the ballot that way. So, I'm here tonight to remind you all that the path staff has laid out for you tonight is a slippery slope for the council. Your big question is, do you ask the public to vote on a general tax? That's a simple majority. Or a special tax, that requires a two-thirds vote. If you read what you're proposing, you just heard Cleve tell you, it's mainly for roads. So, let's just stop there. It's for roads. It's a special tax. It needs to pass by two-thirds. End of story. Let me read you the definition. General tax, it's a tax imposed for general governmental purposes, requiring only a simple majority. Special tax, it's imposed for special purposes, including taxes, imposed for specific purposes, which are placed into a general fund, but it's for that purpose. Those are subject to two-thirds vote or approval. But in an effort to circumvent the two-thirds vote, many cities and counties are placing these advisory votes in conjunction with your ballot measure to, oh, confuse, claim that you're going to spend the money that way. But this is important for the paper to get this one and get it straight. The, it's a companion advisory measure. It advises the local officials how to spend the tax proceeds without actually legally requiring them to do so. It's not binding. Your advisory votes are not binding. And in the future, when there's another crunch in this economy, and there will be one, councils of the future will go, we're having trouble balancing the budgets. We need to pay our folks. You know what? This year, we're not doing any roads. We're paying salaries. We're paying for health benefits. It's, you got to go this, this special tax. So, here are some of the other problems with your strategies. A, I just stated, you're not legally obligated to follow the advisory measures in your general tax language. Two, if the economy takes a dump, and it will, you can divert that money. And three, you're asking the voters to approve a special tax for roads, which requires a two-thirds vote, but you're twisting the rules around. You're trying to slip it in as a general tax, but it's a special tax that you really are going for. And it's just not right. So, my first suggestion is, drop this charade and do what's right and legal. Kill the general tax idea and place a special tax on the ballot to repair the roads. Make your case to the citizens, and see if they agree with you. And if they do, you'll- and see if they agree with you. And if they do, you'll get your two-thirds vote. I'm almost done, Mr. Mayor. Secondly, if you continue with this general tax plan, at least remove the silly remodeling, saving, structurally renovating of City Hall. Sell the damn thing and put the money to your police building. You had it in escrow once. You all voted for it. I won't, I won't, well, you refunded some money, but you didn't talk about that publicly. Um, so at least remove the City Hall and the police buildings from this. Then I have this kind of a crazy idea. It's asking you to be bold tonight. And it's, it's including the roundabout. Where we're at tonight, next month, you have roundabouts on the ballot, and you have sales tax on the ballot. I think you could accomplish two things in, tonight. And I just want to go into the quick history of the night staff brought the city council the roundabout, at least in, when I was involved in this. My recollection is none of the council members that night were exactly excited about the roundabout. We had the bridge money. You get one chance to align the bridge. It was long planned to align Cedar Ravine at Main Street, but not necessarily with the roundabout. But it was the only money we had. Randy went through the Transportation Commission and got the air quality money. That night, we went down that path. We approved it, but I sensed frustration with the council. We asked the questions. Is there any other money to do the four-way stop sign? That night, the answer was no. Well, here we are now talking about finding money for roads. And if, if you get my drift of where I'm heading with this. So if you want to be bold, tonight, you go the special tax. You kill the roundabout. You specifically tell the folks, the first project you'll do with your new sales tax money is build the four-way intersection at Cedar Ravine in, at Main. And I believe your special tax will pass by 70, 80%. You'll do the right thing. You'll get your, your, your four-way done. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And good luck with this one.
Kirk Schmuckler. Um, you've done some polls. Polls are very complex these days. They're not like what they used to be. Uh, even after improvements following Gallup saying that Truman was gonna be trounced by Dewey. It's very complex. Look at, and there's a lot of flaws in the, in the way I saw it. But, but just, uh, look at this guy named Eric Cantor, who spent $5 million of very sophisticated polling, and it didn't help him too much. It wasn't accurate. What you're hearing tonight is just a sampling of what you're really gonna find when you face the polls in November. Number one, you do what Mayor Machado said. Sell the damn thing, referring to the Old City Hall, and watch how fast you get voted out of office. The public was outraged about that. You have no idea. You had a blue ribbon committee. You wanted their recommendations, and you ignore it. So if the public gets the perception that you don't listen to them, there's some factual reasons for it. You need to take steps between now and November to show you're serious about not selling it. Secondly, when you market things like, oh, well, we want the extra money to do necessary things like repaving Main Street, don't come across and sell us, slip it through where you've got the streetscape plan that is more than just repaving Main Street. And whether you really want to have some giant monstrous cement planks like that, planters, or just some tiny planter, it doesn't matter. We don't have money for all these bells and whistles, the extra stuff. It's not there. You've gotta show some fiscal restraint. You haven't had it in the past. You spent about a million dollars for redevelopment money that you wanted, even after the governor said he would do what he did, which is get rid of the money. And we could go down the list. You have to show, between now and November, some fiscal restraint. You have to show that you're gonna spend the money wisely. They're gonna feel betrayed if they spend money thinking like it's gonna be to repair and restore the civic Main Street, City Hall, and then have you turn around and sell it. They would be outraged and feel understandably betrayed. So you need to do, nobody thinks you're gonna do anything but vote for this. But between now and November, to have any chance for success, you have to show you're, one, fiscally responsible. You've changed some pattern spendings, different from what you have in the past. And you're not gonna do these things like the roundabout, that kind of fiasco where you spent a whole bunch of money that nobody wanted, nobody needed, and it cost a lot of money. Remember, these people come here to Marilyn Ferguson's Museum and all over the town, from all over the world, because they like what's old about this town. They like what's historical. They don't come for these new, improved, jazzed-up things that you can find on Sutter Street, where we have merchants on Main Street who fled there, because a lot of newcomers came in and thought they were gonna improve it. Those are things you need to do between now and November, if you think your plan is gonna succeed. Because what you heard tonight is just a tinkling of what's out there, the pulse of this town. That's my suggestion for you. It's not just tonight you have to be worried about. It's what you do between now and November that's gonna convince people to go along with this plan. Because so far, I wasn't happy on June 10th, when you tell us that you're gonna get a design plan to repave Main Street, and it, and then you slip in some things for redevelopment, or for a, a, a plan for streetscape, that a lot of these people know full well they don't like. And they're not the merchants that you see, Carol, at, at your PDA meetings. PDA has a very small fraction of merchants on Main Street, a very tiny number. And they're mostly newcomers. And they're, just like most people, they're not gonna rock the boat. So when you said last week that, that you, you presented it to PDA, I was there. The minutes show just what I represented. You didn't ask what they thought. It was expressed as a done deal. That's what the minutes of March 6th says. Instead, what you did do inappropriately, you asked, what do you want to do about when you repave Main Street? So the pulse of what you heard tonight is just an inkling of what's out there. And that's why you need to do steps that restores public trust.
Thank you.
For how you do with the money.
Any additional comments?
Evelyn Veerkamp, Placerville. I would simply like to make a plea that, on this occasion, the council listened to the voices of business owners. Perhaps not exclusively, but we need some indication that they matter. I'll tell you where I'm coming from when I make this plea or observation. And that is that I remember three years ago, which was probably the first city council meeting I had attended, when the roundabout had come before the city council for discussion and a vote. And at that occasion, 29 people spoke during, I'm not sure what you call it.
Open comment.
Public comment. Of those 29 people, 24 people made impassioned pleas not to proceed. A great many of those people were business owners, particularly from this end of Main Street. They were saying to you that they had barely survived the Highway 50 upgrade, or whatever it's called. So 24 people, most of whom were business owners, or many of whom were business owners, said, please don't. Five people, um, said to proceed. At the end of, when, when it was being wrapped up, what struck me very viscerally was that one of the city counselors said to the business people who had been present, they said, and I, this is almost a direct quote, "You say that you are speaking for business, but to us, you sound like you are very anti-business." And I could not then understand how business owners who were pleading for their economic lives were not taken seriously, how they could be dismissed so blithely. And you have business owners here tonight who are pleading for their lives, who are saying that they cannot, that, that doing this will make them less competitive. And I think the citizens of Placerville would like some indication that they are ever listened to. Thank you.
Stan Morris, resident of historic Main Street. I just have a question. I've read over the addendum, uh, to the initiative, uh, I guess it's a staff report. And it, it reads, there's three options, a portion, and I think it says a portion of the funding would be going for the roads, uh, City Hall, and the police station. Chief, we certainly need to improve our police station, that's for sure. But my question is this, and I'll leave it at that. Is it possible, the way this proposal reads, that the funding could go towards the police station or City Hall, and that the roads would be totally left out of this, and we would have our, uh, bumpy pothole roads even after the sales tax was approved? I'll leave it.
Any additional comments?
I might have the pronunciation of this wrong, but the outcroppings, or bulbs, or whatever you're calling those things that go out, there. Those things that pop out of the sidewalks?
Boltouts.
Okay. You keep saying it's for safety.
Yes, they are.
But if you go into the streetscape, which is an old document, they just keep telling you they're there for trees. It says nothing about safety. And there might be another way to do it without spending that kind of money. Thanks.
Okay. So nobody else puts you in the podium. I'm gonna close the public hearing, comments, and bring you back to council. Uh, I did hear one question, uh, I believe Stan, so would you answer Stan's question, or?
Couple of things I'll mention regarding the last comment, too. Um, yes, Stan, the, the Mr. Morris, the, the-
The other Mr. Morris.
It would be a general tax, uh, which technically allows the council to spend it on anything that they would like to, uh, put it bluntly. Uh, but I think that this council has emphasized the whole reason for doing this is to repair streets and roads. It's not for the police station. That's something we would like to do. Um, it's been on our books since 2000, the year 2000, that that needs to be done, that it's falling apart. That's something that needs to be done. I'm not sure where the money will come from otherwise, but, uh, the priority is streets and roads. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention on the boltouts, the boltouts are being paid for by, um, the, a, an assessment that was done years ago that provides $60,000. And as I understand it, I'm looking at Mr. Warren and our city attorney, that funding can only be spent on items from the streetscape, that's what it was, that's what it was sold for. So it could not be spent for other items, just general items. So $60,000 in there is designed to would pay for, uh, these boltouts on Main Street. So.
All right. Any additional questions of, or comments?
I don't have any questions. I just have my usual comment about sales tax increases. And I have been, um, vocal in saying that I am not in favor of a half cent or a quarter cent. I think, uh, what it does, and I have to agree with the business owners, is that it puts our retailers at a disadvantage for anybody else in our region. It will put the city of Placerville at a full, the half cent, at a full, um, 1% higher than Missouri Flat Road. And when, and I'm told that people don't see it, I don't agree. I think that people do see it, and they will shop on Missouri Flat Road. And, um, so I just want to go on record again as saying I am still not in favor of putting this on the ballot.
Okay.
I do have comments. Anyone else wanna? All right. Um, this, this certainly is an interesting, difficult issue. And I know we've been talking about it since January, February with public meetings. And, um, several of you have been with us through each of the public meetings and public hearings, and have expressed your support through this all the way through. And, and tonight, I, you know, we hear of your, of, you know, your lack of support for that. Um, and we're listening. Um, here's what I'm wrestling with. And, uh, you know, would love, you know, to work with you on this. Um, our main concern, and I know you understand this, you drive on it, is that right now, we are $21 million in deficit as far as our roadways. That is an absolute fact. We are $21 million behind in repair. That is not gonna ever come from, you know, our, of increase in sales tax, as far as, you know, we, we can't spend our way to that. We, we can't buy enough stuff. We, there isn't enough grant money to cover that. Um, currently, we need to spend about, you know, close to a million dollars, $930,000 a year to get our roads where we need to go. Right now, we have $200,000 a year to do that with. And so the roads, the conditions of our roads are just going to continue to deteriorate. I mean, you can twist your ankle on Main Street, coming out of Sutter Street, and all along the way on our neighborhoods. Um, around 52% of our local roads have absolutely no funding source for them. That is a fact. Um, you know, there's no state money, grant money, things like that for local roads. So that puts us in a conundrum. Um, do we want to raise a sales tax? No, we don't. Um, I was a business owner in town for 21 years. I, I get it. Um, we don't want to do it. But we are left with this glaring reality. I mean, there's an outcry all the time, fix the roads. Well, that's what we're trying to do. So, um, this wasn't what I was thinking about tonight as I came into this meeting, but what is most important to me, and I think all of us here, as well as city staff, is that we fix our roads. So, um, if you're saying you don't want the money diverted, you don't trust future councils that, you know, you will support the roads, well, if we do a specific tax, and say that we will have, you know, it only for road maintenance, we will need you to support it, not work against us. If you want the roads in this town to be in decent shape, we need to work together on this. And, you know, I am willing to put that forth for the council, but we need you. We need you active. We need you to help us do that. Uh, because there is no other option right now. Um, and if the public votes to turn it down, you know, our, our roads will continue to deteriorate, period. And that's what you will be voting for. So, um, another, I don't want this to ever be, if we do an initiative where this is only used for local roads, I don't want it confused with a roundabout. It's not gonna build a roundabout. And on, on, coming up, under agenda items, um, I will be asking, uh, the council's approval to direct staff to bring back an agenda item on July 8th, to either adopt a resolution that removes the Clay Street, Cedar Ravine, roundabout as an option, or adopts a resolution to put the question, um, on a ballot for public vote. I will be asking for that later on tonight. Um, my sole desire is we fix our roads in town. And so I'm asking the council, do we do a specific tax and partner with the community to get it, get it done? So.
My feeling on-
Excuse me. We, again, you guys have had your comments. I mean, I appreciate your attendance, and I appreciated your comments, and most of us, everybody respected yours. So would you please, at this point, let us speak, let us, uh, try to get on with the meeting?
This all started out with a road tax.
Yeah, it did.
This all started out with that. And, um, the one gentleman came forward and said, you know, we need to, we need to promote tourism. We need to put our best foot forward. But when you put your best foot forward with cracks, grass growing through them, I, I don't think that's a best foot forward. Our roads are just in deplorable shape. And I sit on the Transportation Commission, and I have gone to meetings recently. Um, I just attended one. It's called CalCog. And there's no help out there. And we're not gonna get it. Um, so it has to be, this is the only way we can do it. I, I, there's just no other way. There, sale, as many of you, a lot of you say, well, you know, where's my property taxes going? Your property taxes are going to pay for our fire department. We get very little of that money. Uh, what we rely on is sales tax. And we need, it, it's been shown that our tourism is really getting to be rather robust. And yes, as so many other communities, we rely on collecting sales tax from our tourists. And yes, they are going to help. Um, I, quite frankly, I was one of the people that I disagree with, Carol. I don't think, when I go to, if I'm gonna travel or something, I do not look at how much sales tax they charge, whether I'm gonna go there or not. I just don't- I just don't think it's that large. And I, what, what we've been told is that it mostly, it relates to large items. And for a lot of the downtown, that isn't involved where it is, is with cars or appliances or something like that, yes. Maybe there will be some instances. But I'm going to tell you, right now, people are leaving this town, they're leaving this county, they're going to Folsom. And they're, you know, so you got to stop that. That's what's got to be stopped. And I don't think it's a reason for, it's, it's not in sales tax. And I'm also going to tell Mr. Machado, I have never, ever approved selling City Hall. And I'm never going to. It was one of the things that I said I didn't want to do. I've been talking about it for eight years. I think we've got a lot of wonderful possibilities on that corner. And especially if the courthouse, and, and we don't have any control over that courthouse. We've been mandated, not we, but the state has been mandated, that courthouse has been declared unsafe, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And whoever controls the courthouses, once that's sold, they want a new one built in El Dorado County. We have no say. But we've got three great historical buildings up there. And in my estimation, having it right off the freeway, having this wonderful reason to display all that in, and this is all in, not, it's not going to happen right away because it's all pending. But I think we've got a wonderful opportunity for tourism, et cetera, right there on that corner up there. I am never going to vote to sell our city hall.
Tricia.
We have all these needs, and I really, it's, our roads are, they're not going to get any better. But what are we going to do? We've spent all this time exploring the options. We've done phone surveys. We have a huge need with our police facility. We have City Hall. We need, if, we want to keep it, we need to fix it. I really am not in favor of taking, putting, of taking those things out of this. I, I'm sorry?
My comments are, again, I appreciate all of the comments tonight from all the business owners. I've also talked to a number of business owners. We've talked to a number of business owners at PDA. I know some people indicate that PDA is only a part of our business that's downtown. But again, at PDA, there were a number of people that saw the 20-minute presentation made by Mr. Morris on the Main Street and the repairs that we are proposing for Main Street. Again, that is three years' worth of our taxes for roads. So for three years, save it up, we can do Main Street resurfacing. We have some funding we're able to use from sewer and water funds that we can use to do those repairs. So there is about $600,000 plus the other funds we have available to get up to probably close to three quarters of a million, 800,000, yeah, close to a million dollars in work to resurface, repair Main Street to do it right. And we're working on that, and that's going to go through. But that, again, takes up, it'd be another two or three years before we can do anything major, anything small, other than just do some patching. And those funds, most of them, a lot of them are restricted to arterial roads. They're not, they cannot be used on residential. Unfortunately, you saw earlier, fortunately or unfortunately, earlier, some plans for the interstate and the overpass at Ray Lawyer and Placerville Drive. Those funds, we go after primarily federal and state funds. And it takes a process of several years to get online and have these projects. It also takes several years to design and run these through the environmental impact repository. That interchange, when I first came on the council nine and a half years ago, was in the neighborhood of $35 million. Today, that current budget is probably in excess of $60 million. But we've been able to do the first Phase 1A. We've got 1A point 2, if you will, or point 1 funded now. And in the 16, 17 years, we're going to have 2A and B funded, which is the eastbound off-ramps onto Ray Lawyer Drive. All of those things will reduce traffic and improve that area. People don't, maybe they don't realize it or look at the traffic that comes down when the city, when the county gets off work at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon. But those streets, Fair Lane especially, is backed up sometimes quite a ways. That new improvement there off of Fair Lane and off of Ray Lawyer now really makes a difference in the traffic flow. I, I have come, you know, I guess I'm, I'm at a point where I, I want to see us do something. And I think we can, with your help, I think we can pass a, a tax to improve roads. There's two ways we could do it. A quarter cent sales tax would get us there over a period of 20 years. Because it was 970,000 per year is approximately what they're talking about. A half cent sales tax would get us there in 10 years. And we would have, at that point, have the ability to look at that sunsetting and the voters in 10 years deciding if it should continue. In other words, if we've made the progress we, we said we hope to make, I think it would work. But I think it needs to be a general, I mean, a specific tax. It needs to be roads only at this point. Down the road, I would hope that future councils would figure out a way to either do a design build or a design lease option build to remodel the, the Public Safety Building. That may be one other alternative down the road. And hopefully, City Hall stands up long enough that we can find some funding methods through grants and other things. But unfortunately, most grants, whether they're roads, whether they're repairing historic buildings or not require some kind of a match. So that match generally comes from our sales tax revenue, our general fund revenue. So at this point, I guess I would be supportive of, of doing that. Sure.
What I've heard, I don't, I don't know, I haven't heard that they want a quarter cent sales tax. It's like, there's the people, we need this to get done, and then don't tax us, we're businesses. And I haven't heard we want a quarter cent or we want a half cent for 10 years or 20 years. It's either all or nothing, so...
I didn't say that. I just, so that was the option.
This is just what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
As far as listening, everybody, the county, the city, put it to a vote, put this to a vote, put that. That's what we're doing here. We're just trying to put a package of what we think would be the best to present for a vote. So we're not saying we hereby tax you guys at a half cent. We're just trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out, what can we present? And then you guys can say yes. The business owners can say, everyone who walks through your door, don't vote on that horrible tax. It won't pass. I mean, it's just, that's how I'm thinking about it. So I say we just, this is what our city's needs are. This is how we can pay for it. Do you guys want it? And that's, that's what I would like to see. Because I haven't seen, I haven't heard anybody, I haven't heard anybody say we want a quarter, I haven't heard it reconfigured. It's either yes or no.
I, I sure understand your frustration with that. From what I, I am hearing, that the community resoundingly supports our need for local roads. And, and I'm hoping that, that if we nail it down to that and look for other funding options for those other needs, that the community will rally behind that and support that because they will trust that the money will be used to repair our roads, which everyone, I mean, no one denies that they are in dire need. And that it's not going to get any better. It's, and, and yet it would take, it would take everyone supporting it and, you know, getting out the vote because it would require a two-thirds vote as opposed to a, you know, a majority vote.
Is there no time to bring this back to have more public comment if that's what they want? Is this the final?
We've been six months on this.
The two, the July 2nd? I think you said there might have been some flexibility.
I am fairly confident, real confident, right, John, that we could bring it back on July 8th if you wanted to, if you want us to bring something else to you.
The county has asked for submission.
I would just rather, if we're going to, if we're going to, we've had this pretty much in the plan, and it's looked the same. And we've heard, had comment. And it's kind of frustrating because now, I haven't heard you guys, and I'm listening. And it's like, you can't say anything more because we're going to vote right now. If we're going to make that huge change from what I was, what I had envisioned, and I think what they had too, I think we should open it back up and bring it back. So we can hear it come back, we'll discuss, think about what we, what has been proposed up here, maybe. Are you open to a quarter percent tax? Are you open to stretching out a quarter?
We've been there. I was using the example.
I would like that.
But, I mean, I'll, I'll make a, yes, John?
If you were to put this over and not make a decision tonight, you would have to make a decision at your next meeting, that first meeting in July. The county has asked for submission of ballot measures by July 2nd. That meeting is July 8th. However, I think there is room in there to, to actually file the ballot measures after the July 8th meeting, based on the state law in terms of when things have to be submitted.
Okay. Well, I'd like to see us bring back two resolutions. One would be a specific tax for roads only. And at a half cent for 10 years. An alternative would be similar to your option three, basically just a general tax with examples of options that could go with it for the same amount for 10 years.
I will second that.
So both of them, both of them are the same percentage, half cent. Okay. One is specific to roads, one is general, which, which would allow more flexibility in the funding, the use of the funds. I would also include on those things, on both of those, an advisory committee to operate and work on either of those same thing, the same thing. If it's roads, prioritize and work with the city's engineering staff to say, these are the roads we want to see fixed first, these are the roads we want stuff worked on. And the second would be similar, an advisory board or advisory committee that would be advisory to the council to show those options.
We'll still second that.
Discussion?
Yes.
This half of the room is against a sales tax.
Right.
So it doesn't matter whether it's specific or whatever it is, they're against it.
But, but I would assume some of those same people are probably in favor of us fixing roads.
And we've never discussed that fully.
And if we look at, we have discussed it several times, but I don't believe the majority of these people have been at those meetings. But I think that if they try to figure out a way to come up with $21 million over the next short period of time, let's say 10 years, if they come up with a better solution, I'd be glad to listen to it. You know, I mean, we all have businesses. A lot of us have businesses. A lot of us pay, have payroll to meet every, either every Friday or every two weeks like I do. A lot of us have to pay rent, or we own a building, or we have to do maintenance to our building and, and fix up things. A lot of us have to spend or know what it costs to do some repaving in a small area. It's not cheap. And so anyway, those are, that's my suggestions and my ideas. We've got two, two solutions to check from next, next week. Or two weeks.
So you're proposing that in that two weeks, that they establish an advisory committee?
No, 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 no. No, it's just the same, same as we're talking about here.
That were presented with...
Advisory committee that would be formed if, if it passes. Just the same as we have, like, Measure H. It's, it's also part of this resolution.
I know, and that was part of the thing when I, when I first, when I knew about this, that was my, I said I would never vote for anything, a, a tax issue unless we had an advisory committee. I happen to think that the Measure H, the water situation, they have an advisory committee. And I know Mrs. Rodman is very active on that. And I, I'm a little stymied as to why she said maybe you can't trust future councils. I understand that. But we've listened to her commission and accepted everything that she's, and so I can't see why we can't find another advisory committee, whether this is a specific or not a specific.
Right.
You know, it would be made up of Placerville residents who would advise us. And I, I think any council would be remiss in not, you know, whether it be this one or what, but...
And all these options include an advisory council, as they always have.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
So what's your pleasure? I know, I know yours.
It's been moved and seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to request that two options come back at the next meeting. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
So it passes 3-2? Thank you. Move on to item. I'd like to take a break at this point.
Before you leave this subject, with the deadline of July 8th and whatnot, you're, you're talking about all the pro-sales tax paperwork. There's also the no paperwork that has to be filed. Can Mr. Driscoll inform us as to, I mean, your move to the next meeting with the county's deadline has severely impacted the ability to, for the no people to respond. So what would be our timing to get the paperwork in?
That doesn't change the timing for arguments in opposition at all.
When would they be due? Do you have a rough idea? And that would be my only question.
I don't have the schedule with me. I want to say, well, I know that my impartial analysis is due August 8th.
All right.
And so I don't believe that it would be due sooner, it would be after that, I'm sure.
Good enough. Thanks.
So take a break for five minutes?
I know. I know. Tricia, did they put your little boy in the special class at what time we were somewhere?
Oh, yeah, but, um, advanced reading classes. Oh, he loves, well, school's out now. He loves, he was so happy that, I was worried that he couldn't feel the needed because he had to go to a different class and we did second and third graders and he might, he was so happy.
Because he's happy.
He gets to work because it's like, he, he learned to read and then once you know, he can learn. So he can enjoy reading because he likes to learn about things and he can use it as a tool rather than something that's just, you know.
He was bored.
He was bored, he was so bored.
Yeah.
So they'll reassess next year the interest first rate and then he'll, you know, he's truly good. Still does, he's, we're sure he'll just.
I'm sure he'll stay in it. My, my grandkids are all three of them, they're in the Excel, they're late, they're on through school.
Okay, so what did you find out?
Yeah, I don't know if.
Five to nine, four to nine, it was a transition. I think it's 10.
Other transportation.
It is 10.
What's that?
I don't think we officially.
After 10.
I don't think it was ever officially passed.
I don't remember.
We talked about it, but I don't think it was, but I, what do I?
I don't remember.
I don't remember my own day.
I don't remember.
Susan Zito, is there a rule that we don't introduce any new agenda items after nine or 10 o'clock?
Only one genre went to the.
It is, and we talked about doing it and we never did it. I remember that. Go ahead. We talked, we talked about it.
Alright, at this time I want to call the meeting back to order. And we are on item 12.3. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
What, to just end the whole thing right now?
Okay, Mr. Morris, item 12.2, please. Adopt a resolution establishing.
No.
I'm not doing that one again.
I'm sorry, 12.3. Half a percent rate increase. I'm sorry, 12.3 is adopt a resolution for, that implements the previously authorized adjustments in wastewater rates based on the change in California Consumer Price Index. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight is rec, tonight staff is recommending a 1.87% increase in wastewater rates based on the annual change in the California Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers from April 2013 to April of 2014. At median consumption, the rate increase is equivalent to about a $3.77 increase each bimonthly billing period or about $1.89 per month for single-family residential ratepayers. If approved, the adjusted rates would be used to calculate the November utility bills. The primary reason for this increase is to ensure adequate cash flow in order to make the third $1.5 million payment on the 2006 state revolving fund loan that is due in September of 2016. As a review, the city council adopted Resolution 7750, which established new wastewater rates on October 13, 2009, that became effective October 16, 2009, and August 16, 2012. Resolution 7750 also authorized adjustments to the wastewater rates based on the annual change in the California Consumer Price Index as of April of each year beginning in 2011. Rates were adjusted by the change in the CPI from August, excuse me, April of 2010 to April 2013, which was equivalent to a 6.34% increase effective August 16, 2013. As you know, the city council completed a major improvement project to the wastewater treatment plant in 2009, which was primarily financed by a $42 million SRF loan. The first original loan payment was due fiscal year 2010-11 and totaled 1.4 million due to deferral of the previous rate increases, ratepayer water conservation, which directly affected sewer user rate revenue and payment delinquencies as a result of bankruptcies, job loss, and home foreclosure, et cetera. Glad that's behind us. It became apparent that the city would not have adequate cash flow to make the full debt service payment in fiscal year 10-11. In response to that situation, staff negotiated a modified loan payment schedule with the State Resources Control Board, which lowered the payment amounts for the first three years of the loan. The full annual payment in, from 2013 to 2039 is $1,528,631. In order to afford the full $1.5 million payment, staff set aside fund balance and a rate stabilization reserve between fiscal year 9-10 and 12-13, as shown in the second table on page two of your report. As you can see, staff forecast the rate stabilization reserve will fall short by about $60,000 in making the third $1.5 million payment. In order to make up that $60,000, it is necessary to implement the previously authorized adjustment to wastewater rates based on the change in CPI from April 2013 to 14, as discussed earlier. And the billing period in which it would be affected would be this coming August 16th. As mentioned earlier, the California CPI increased 1.87% during that period of time. The adjustment would generate approximately $90,444 in fiscal year 2014, 2015, which is adequate in addressing the $60,000 reserve shortfall in fiscal year 15 and 16. The current and proposed rates are shown on table, the table on page three of the report. The rate increase being requested tonight was authorized by Resolution 7750, which was subject to Proposition 218. Prop 218 notices were provided to ratepayers prior to the adoption of that resolution. That resolution was subject to public hearing that was held on October 13, 2009. As a result, the city is not required to provide new Prop 218 notices to ratepayers. It's important to note that the voter-approved Measure H sales tax has afforded approximately 1.1 million in sewer and water infrastructure projects and approximately 1.5 million in new, excuse me, sewer charge discounts since its inception. Again, the rate increase is equivalent to about a $4 increase each bimonthly billing period or about $2 per month for single-family residential ratepayers. The adjusted rates would be used to calculate the November utility bill. The rates were assumed in the proposed fiscal year 14-15 sewer enterprise budget that you adopted tonight. And if the proposed rate increase is approved tonight, we will circulate informational notices in both the July and November utility bills. With that, we recommend that you adopt the wastewater rates as presented tonight.
Okay. Any questions of, Mr. Warren? You have a question on the Warren Report?
I do, the revised Warren Report. I have a question on the Measure H discount.
Yeah.
So, so that discount goes only to residential users?
No, it goes to all users. It's based on a formula that the Measure H committee has reviewed a couple of times now and has revised. Actually, you tasked the committee to review those discounts last spring. They reviewed those discounts last summer and fall and made proposals to you, which you adopted. So the discount varies for a residential customer. It's $15 per billing period. And for businesses, it ranges anywhere from, for example, retail stores and offices is $55. For, for example, the hospital because they're a very large.
User.
Impactor to our wastewater treatment plant, it's $945 per billing period.
I guess I may probably phrase that wrong and I apologize. My, my question has to do with, so what your, what your recommendation, or what staff's recommendation is, is to follow the rate adjustment as laid out in the Prop, in the Prop 218 rules and, and increase the rate by 1.87% or whatever and, and still take that discount? What would happen if you just eliminated the discount?
There'd be a lot of unhappy people, I think. It would, the council could choose to do that. You have a Measure H advisory committee that has recommended that you continue the discount program through the end of this coming fiscal year, at least, based on the current discounts. There is interest by the committee to explore the ratepayers' appetite for possibly expanding the use of Measure H for capital improvement projects to kind of get caught up in our water and sewer line replacement. And they're planning on, with the council's guidance, preparing a survey to go out to ratepayers probably sometime next spring to find out what the public's appetite is for further use of Measure H for capital replacement.
So.
But the way it was put on the ballot, the way it was put on the ballot was that it was, part of it was for capital improvements and part of it was for reduction in rates for the local residents.
And, and are they two different pots of money?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, Measure H funds are one pot.
Okay, wait, I'm getting no's and yeses, so.
Measure H.
I'm gonna look at Warren over here.
Okay, Measure H is a specific use tax that is accounted for in a separate fund, completely separate from water and sewer enterprise funds. Your adopted budget assumes transferring in from Measure H to your sewer enterprise fund approximately $487,000 to fund the discount program. The discount program, the way it, it's actually calculated by the utility bills, how many utility bills we have in each category, whether, you know, residential and all the various business categories. And so the actual cost is derived by the actual bills themselves, using the rates that were adopted by the city council.
So the Measure H funds cannot be used to make up that 1.87% increase? Is, is that true?
The, the, the council could adopt the use of Measure H to, you could increase the transfers in from the Measure H fund for specific purposes in the sewer enterprise fund. For example, you could say, we would like to accelerate debt repayment. You could transfer in funds for that purpose because the ordinance, Mr. Driscoll, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it allows for that use, specific use for debt repayment and capital, water and sewer capital replacement.
Is the, is the Measure H discount program, is that mandated a certain amount?
No.
Per, per the law? What I'm getting at is it just seems to me, it seems to me that it's kind of a sleight of hand. We are asking over here to raise the rates and yet over here where we're charging a tax to offset, to pay for infrastructure and to give a discount on these same rates.
Right.
And it's just like, okay, why don't we just lessen the discount by 2% or 1.87% so we don't have to raise our rates again?
I, I think it's important, and this is a recommendation from your finance director.
Right.
To exercise your rights. You have the authorization to exercise a rate increase. It's totally reasonable in an environment where CPI is anywhere from 1% to 3% a year when rate increases have been deferred, to exercise a 1.87% increase. I think it's totally reasonable. I think it's understandable. Not everybody's going to be happy about it, but I think it's when you compare inflation in your grocery bill, gas, other things, it's, and I, I understand the, what you're saying regarding, you know, you have two funding sources and why increase it when you have revenues from another source? But I can tell you that your Measure H fund, your, your fund balance through the end of this coming fiscal year is fully encumbered. So based on the appropriations the council has made, based on the, the capital improvement program adopted last year, fiscal year 13-14, as well as the appropriations for Main Street project, you've pretty much tied down all that money. So there's not additional money to supplement the sewer enterprise fund operationally. So the fund, the way, now, if Measure H outperforms forecasts, in other words, if our revenue forecasts, we're forecasting about $1 million Measure H for fiscal year 14-15. If it outperforms that, there may be additional fund balance that you could say, okay, we want to appropriate that money for. want to appropriate that money for, you know, operationally." You can't, you have to identify specifically, though, if it's for either debt repayment or infrastructure improvements. You can't, for example, you can't just use it to pay personnel or supplies or other miscellaneous expenses.
Because it's a specific tax.
It has to be specific to either debt or infrastructure.
Right.
Yeah.
But yet, we can use it for a discount for the bill.
Because that was part of the, that was part of the measure when it was passed.
That's correct.
So, initiative when it was passed, is it, it could include a discount for rates. And if we, if we let this go, here, here's what I, having gone through the wars of the rate increases, where we had to take a 20% rate increase, I believe it was close to that in wastewater, maybe more?
Wastewater, for the residential customer, on average, median consumption, it was about a 92% increase.
92.
The initial. And that was actually, it was reduced.
And it was because, for several years, the city council, the city council did not approve automatic increases with inflation. So, you know, and so, we get behind the wheel, then we have to go do a 218 hearing, and anyway. So, my, my recommendation is that we pass these increases and move on, and...
I, I was also gonna mention, if I may, sales tax is dependent on the economy. So, if measure, if, if the economy falters, your Measure H dollars may falter, and then you have to rely more on your rate revenue, and if that isn't kept in check, you may be upside down very quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments? Okay. Any questions from the public regarding 12 and, .3 and 12.12? To start with wastewater.
Do you want 12.3 separate from 12.4?
Because that's what we're...
12.3 is what we're on now, right?
Yes.
Okay. I think that if you're gonna put validity in your Measure H committee, then the last thing you want to do is mix apples and oranges and start taking the discount instead of doing incremental rate increases. When it's tied to the Consumer Price Index, everybody knows that gas goes up, groceries go up, the water bill goes up, everything goes up tied to that. If you start playing with your Measure H dollars, you may find yourself short on being able to, right now, people are counting on, "Okay, here's our discount. We know what it's gonna be from month to month to month." If we start playing with it, I think that then we raise the specter of how much do they trust us? And it raises some distrust there, where if we know, okay, that it's gonna increase, but we know why its consumer price has increased, so that's a rational thing to do. But if you start playing around with the discounts, especially since we would like to do some studies on these discounts anyway this fall, and see if people, right now, over half of the Measure H money is going into discounts. If we start putting even more of the Measure H money into discounts, which basically, if you're starting to pay your rate increases with Measure H money, that's what you're doing, then you're lessening the amount that you have to do infrastructure. And one of the very biggest things that we passed this measure on was getting Placerville so that it doesn't turn into a giant leach field, that we get these sewer repairs done in some kind of rational schedule, basically as rapidly as possible. My disappointment is that so much money is going to the sewer discounts. I'd like to see it change a little bit so that we've got more than half going to infrastructure. And that was my proposal to the Measure H committee for a, to send out a little survey with their water bills to say, "Would you, how important is the discount to you? If it were reduced by 20%, and you knew that that meant there was this much more going into infrastructure, would you be supportive?" And I think that's, that's one of the things that, that people really were for, was, "Let's fix our infrastructure, and let's reduce our debt." But more, more, the most emphasis was, "Let's fix our infrastructure first." It cuts down on the amount that we end up paying to the Central Valley Water Quality Board for, for fees and fines, and it gets our city so that it smells better. And who knows what is supporting the growth of the grass in the pavement? We haven't had a rain for a very long time, but we know we have water and sewer pipes under there, and that grass is awfully green. And we all know the little story about the grass is always greener over the septic tank.
On the other side of the street.
Septic tank.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional comments? Saying none, I'll bring it back to the council for action.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second by...
Second.
Ms. Patton? Moved in second, because this is a rate, I think we'll probably do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Borelli.
Hi.
Mayor Hagan.
Hi.
Councilmember Patton.
Hi.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to make sure that the audience and Ms. Rodman know that I wasn't at all implying that we play with anything. I am very serious about taxes and very serious about how we spend our money, and I would no more consider playing than I would anything else. So, I just wanted to be sure. I was just exploring, I don't understand exactly where the money's coming from and how it's getting spent and how it's allocated, didn't know that, I had no idea it was 50%. None, that that's how much the discount is. It just seemed...
50% of the...
Of the Measure H money, right.
Goes to a discount.
Goes to a discount. I had, I, I just had no idea that that was, that that was part of it. So, I just, I just wanted to be sure that, you know, I wasn't playing. I was just exploring how it is that we came to these discounts, and can we make it clear to the public, which I think you did, that they, they understand the discounts and the CPI rates, but it, it just seemed to me that we have these, kind of these offsetting things, and I just, I just wanted to explore it, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Item 12.4, thank you. Same thing for water.
Similar story. Costs are going up, and we need to cover those costs. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, staff is recommending a 3.71% increase in water rates. The proposed rates would be used to calculate the November utility bills. At median consumption, the increase would be equivalent to a $3.13 increase every two months, or $1.57 per month. The rate adjustment is necessary primarily due to the increased cost of purchasing water from EID. As you know, EID adopted new multi-year municipal water rates that became effective beginning in July 13th, a couple of years, about three years ago. EID's planned 5% rate increase that becomes effective January 1st, 2015, will cost the city approximately $73,289 more to purchase water annually as compared to fiscal year 13, 14 level. The 3.71% rate increase would generate approximately $55,000 in fiscal year 14, 15, and $73,000 in fiscal year 15, 16, because it's a mid-year rate adjustment. And that would help it offset the increased cost of purchasing water through June 30th, 2016. The proposed rates fall well within the multi-year rates adopted by the city council in October 2009. The proposed rates also maintain the equitable rate tiering adopted by the council in May 2010. It's important to note that the proposed rate increase would have been even more if it wasn't for voter-approved Measure H sales tax, as we talked about earlier. The adopted fiscal year 14, 15 water enterprise fund budget assumes only a $6,000 CIP set aside, which is hardly enough to chip away at the $26 million in capital replacement needs. In addition to providing a 10% discount, Measure H is providing $1.7 million in funding for sewer and water capital replacement. If it wasn't for Measure H sales tax, these projects would have been funded from an even higher utility rates. As mentioned earlier, the proposed rates fall well within the multi-year rates the council adopted by resolution in October 2009. That resolution was subject to Prop 218, like the sewer rates. Proposition 218 notices were provided to ratepayers prior to the adoption of the resolution. That resolution, like the sewer rates, was subject to public hearing that was held on October 13, 2009. As a result, the city is not required to provide new Prop 218 notices to ratepayers. Additionally, the city is entitled to adopt rates that pass through increases in wholesale charges, such as EID's water rate increase, to retail ratepayers, as spelled out in California Government Code Section 53756C. Staff plans on circulating an informational notice regarding both the water and sewer rates with the July and November utility bills. In closing, the proposed rate increase will incrementally offset the increased cost of purchasing water from EID through June 30, 2016, thereby helping to avoid larger percentage increases in the future. And with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments.
Questions of Mr. Warren? Thank you. Any questions, public, open questions, comments?
If it's water and sewer, you know you're gonna hear from me, right? I think that a 5% increase for EID and us only having to do a 3.7% increase is pretty good. It says that the city's managing it very well, and I agree with Dave's comment that if it weren't for Measure H, being able to put in some money toward the infrastructure, we would be in worse shape than we are now. We still have some one-inch water lines out there we still need to do so that people have more than a garden hose for their fire protection, but I think we'll get there eventually.
Thank you. Yes, and I know the other thing we need to do is keep an eye on EID, because some of their board members feel that our rates are too low. Having been busy on their rate studies in the past and negotiating with them for the city's rates on wholesale, they don't all understand wholesale versus retail. So, at this point, I'll accept the...
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Moved in second. Any additional comments? Okay. Call for the question, please. Yes.
I'm sorry. You did have public comment.
You had a comment?
No, I thought you hadn't had public comment, but yes.
I did public comment.
It's past my bedtime. I'm sorry, I'm a little fuzzy.
That's okay, mine too.
That was moved by Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
And seconded by Councilmember Patton. Thank you.
Even I forgot.
Vice Mayor Borelli.
Yes.
Mayor Hagan.
Hi.
Councilmember Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
All right. We are on to item number 13. Any council member reports? I'll start with you.
I've been in Mexico, nope.
No action going on down there, huh? Well, I don't wanna go there. Ms. Borelli.
Yes, we had a special, we had two special meetings called, in addition to the one that we usually do, we, Commissioner Wilkins and I had Transit Authority, and we also had the Transportation Commission, and I attended a special meeting of CalCog in Sacramento on behalf of the Transportation Commission. And no, I didn't go to Sedcor. That was about it. Went to the, went to the Wonderful Fair and went to the Paint What Matters Celebration downtown, and that was just great.
Yeah, it was.
It was really, it was, it was a party.
It was, a party in Placerville.
All right. Ms. Patton.
We meet tomorrow for LAFCO.
Okay. And Tricia?
I attended the special Transportation Commission meeting, and the special Transit Authority meeting, and the Wonderful Fair.
Right. And I attended a SA-COG meeting, and I've passed along some information to our city manager regarding shared services in an area of the Midwest, what's it called? Mid-America Regional, Mid-America Regional Council. They have some very interesting shared services concept. That concept is that you share services throughout the area to thereby helping reduce costs and provide efficiencies and numbers. We are exploring a number of those items. We currently do a number of traffic management studies. One of the most interesting things to me, and maybe the chief has heard about it, but is, in Mid-America, they have two states, nine counties, and about 61 cities, and they are all interconnected on their 911 service. They had a number of very serious multi-futility accidents. One, may recall, the, the Bridgeway and the Marriott fell down, killing several people. And then, they had an airplane crash and a, some weather-related incidents within a short period of time. They found out they couldn't communicate with each other, even though they had all the ambulances and they, they were driving to hospitals with over-capacity ERs. So, now, they're all tied together, and they've been able to generate some great savings and also efficiencies by doing that, plus, plus, just an equipment thing also, and fire and rescue stuff. So, they've got, I think, four, I forget what they call them, the major incident vehicles that can go out for lifting off heavy pieces of concrete and so forth to get people out from underneath buildings and so forth. So, anyway, it's, it was just an extremely interesting one-hour presentation by them. That was on the 19th. We also passed our budget and work plan for the year. Again, most of these agencies, including the Eldorado County Transportation Commission, most of your long-range projects that, when you use outside agencies and planners, are, go out to bid, because it's a lot better than overstaffing, so, on the hopes that you'll get a grant. If you get a grant, then you hire consultants to process most of it and utilize your staff on a minimal basis. So, I think we do the same thing in this city, and I think that's something that all of us need to be proud of, the fact that how wisely we use those funds for those types of requests. Item 14.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Request for future agenda items.
I ask council's approval to direct staff to bring back an agenda item on July 8th to either adopt a resolution that removes the Clay Street Cedar Ravine Roundabout as an option, or adopt a resolution to put the question on the ballot for public vote. And my intention is, on this, is to keep the sales tax initiative clear as to our intentions, so it does not get muddied, and to preserve the viability of the Western Placerville Interchange, in which there is a tremendous amount at stake.
Discussion? Any comments? Anybody else agree, disagree?
I would agree.
Okay. And I will also agree. Consensus?
I think we need to have that discussion.
Verbal.
We have three, for sure, so, okay.
I mean, it's just, it's a conversation.
It's a, we need to have a conversation about our options on this.
So, and the way I read that is, two options? Yes, no? Got it?
Two options, yes, no, what? Two options, yes on one, no on the other? Yes on both?
Two different options, is what I'm saying.
Or no on everything.
Right.
Right. Say that again.
Yes to this, yes to this, or no, nothing, no vote.
So, that's three options.
I don't think that was one of the options.
Could you restate what, what you're asking for?
What would you want to...
Well, no is always an option. I mean, it's like no project. Direct staff to bring back an agenda item on July 8th to either adopt a resolution that removes the Clay Street Cedar Ravine Roundabout as an option, or adopt a resolution to put the question on the ballot for public vote. And if we did do that, this is in response to the proposed initiative already, we, that would need, my understanding, it would need to be done at the next meeting? If, if that were to be on, if we were to, to come out in front of this as a council and put the Clay Street Cedar Ravine on the ballot ourselves, rather than tying it in with the Western Placerville Interchange.
Okay, so, the two options that you're asking for are a ballot measure?
Yes.
Or a resolution?
To remove the Clay Street Cedar Ravine Roundabout.
Those are the two options.
As we look at improvements to that intersection. Right.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Is that clear? Ms. Staff? Okay. Is that clear, Ms. Staff? Okay?
I have, I have one thing.
So, I'm sorry, what? Okay, go ahead.
It has to do with introduction of agenda items after a certain hour of the night, and I'm wondering, you know, what the magic hour is, and I'd like to see what Planning Commission has and...
About ten-thirty.
Anyways, I, you know, personally, I think we brought it up before, but I can't remember the discussion now in the times.
I'm fairly certain that we adopted it, but we'll bring it back for review, so you can see what you're gonna do with it.
I think we adopted ten o'clock.
I agree, yes.
But was that when we started at seven or six?
It was, it was.
We've always started at six since we've been on council.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We, it was, we started at six, and we adopted that.
Okay. But maybe, maybe right.
Bring it back as any information. We'll bring it back for review.
Check it out. Thank you.
City manager and staff reports?
I wanted to, and I didn't know where else to bring this up, when we had the two-by-two, Wendy and I and Cleve, and we were presented with a report from the Cameron Park Rotary Club. It was a, an assessment that they've done, a comprehensive study on the homeless issue, and it's gonna be presented to the Board of Supervisors on July twenty-eighth at two o'clock. And they really did, I think, an outstanding job in reviewing and interviewing, et cetera, and I think it's well worth everybody knowing about.
Okay, thanks for that reminder.
July twenty-eighth. Can we, notice on that goes out closer to the date?
As far as when the meeting is, yeah.
We can also probably, I think, she gave us a copy of that report. We can send you copies of the report, so...
I have mine, yeah, yeah. We could print one up for...
Okay.
It's a good one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, okay, now, Staff, if, next time, let's put that under our council reports, also, two-by-two updates.
Good idea.
If it's appropriate, obviously.
Yeah, 'cause that would've given me a way, a place to report it.
Okay. She just wants to go home.
All right. Upcoming items. Tentatively scheduled will be city council meeting on July eighth. It will include Madrone and Giovanni Lift Stations, Hangtown Creek Water Reclamation Facility, Madrone, a blower replacement. Okay. Community development, I get to learn something else now. Community Development Block Grant Agreement with Eldorado County. Okay, so at this time, during the meeting, our next scheduled meeting will be at July eighth at five PM closed session, six PM regular session. Thank you.